Good morning, and welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for the 12th of February 2019. I'd like to welcome you all today. If you are capable, please rise for the pleasure of allegiance.
Supervisor Mills, please lead us this morning.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move on to announcements. Clerk?
Report of today's closed sessions. Item one, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, closed session with county-designated labor negotiator Judy Hawkins regarding Employee Organization Service Employees International Union. There was no reportable action taken.
Thank you very much. Are there any announcements from the board? Supervisor Mills?
Yes Chair, there is a meeting tonight with Eastern San Joaquin Grandwater Basin Authority in Lockford beginning at 5:30 at their community hall. This is an opportunity for public input regarding the basin plan and for anyone that is living basically in District One, you are going to be affected by these decisions. And the state is now giving us their statement on what they're going to do should there be a probationary period or a default and a failure to perform, which is quite onerous. And I think that people need to understand what those pieces mean as to how they're going to step in and run the show should we not be able to do it. So, there is on the GSA website the PowerPoint presentations for this. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out and contact myself or Peter Martin with CCWD so we can get your questions answered. Thank you.
Thank you very much Supervisor Mills.
You can include parts of District Five, western parts of District Five in that also.
So if you're in the western side of the county, you're involved. Very good. Any announcements from staff? Seeing none, we will move on to recognitions and acknowledgements.
Item two is from the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors to proclaim the week of February 11th through February 15th, 2019, as Kindness Week in Calaveras County and further deem the county as a Random Acts of Kindness Zone.
Supervisor Calloway, will you please take the reins on this?
Yes. Is there anyone here representing the Burgans family? Well, then I'm going to represent the Burgans family, which is truly my honor. Jim Burgans and his family started Random Acts of Kindness like twenty-some years ago, and they used to give out flowers. But then they owned a flower shop, so that made sense. So, I really feel that Jim and Judy and their family have brought the importance and a good reminder to the rest of us every year that it doesn't take much to buy somebody a cup of coffee, starting with your favorite supervisor.
You want to put that as a gift there Supervisor Calloway?
Oh, no, it's under ten bucks. So, I want to read this in honor of the Burgans. Whereas National Random Acts of Kindness Week will be observed February 11th through 15, and whereas Calaveras County has participated in Random Acts of Kindness since 2010, we're a little slow in catching up to City of Angels, whereas all who live and are work within Calaveras are encouraged to practice Random Acts of Kindness and the tradition started in Angels Camp by the Burgans family. Now, bear it be proclaimed that Calaveras County Board of Supervisors recognizes what-
We need to hear your vote.
We do? Okay, let me finish reading and then we'll take a vote. The week of February 11th. So, could you please do a Random Act of Kindness to me?
I am doing a Random Act of Kindness. You can finish and then we'll circle back.
February, okay, thank you. February 11th through 15th to be Kindness Week throughout the county. I'm surprised Alsa Gallagher didn't catch it first. Be it firmly proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors declares that the county of Calaveras redeemed a Random Act of Kindness Zone, and as the clerk to the board told us this morning, somebody stole our Kindness Zone sign today. During the week of February 11th, and that the residents and visitors continue to observe the ripples of kindness throughout 2019. Go ahead.
Okay, so we will have some board discussion, then we're going to circle back and vote on this proclamation. Any comments from board?
Would it be better to do a public comment first?
Can you pull the comment? Pull the comment?
Marty Crane, really thank you for sharing that history. I recall that when the Burgans family did it, you could go and they would give you a dozen roses, but you could only keep one. And you couldn't just give eleven to one person, you had to give one to a different person throughout the community. And that's definitely spreading the feeling of kindness. And today, as we talk about things in the county, we develop policies and our general plan update is coming, we'd like us to sprinkle a bit of kindness throughout the policy. Because after all, the policies, the general plan update is the guiding principle for how we live here and how we develop fair and balanced policy that provides for equal and balanced opportunities for everyone. So, sprinkle a little kindness out there. Thank you.
Ms. Newman?
Good morning. Also, what the Burgans family initiated was these little blue ribbons that said Acts of Kindness, and that's exactly what I mean. And I just want to brag a little bit because over the years, I received one from Steve Wolinski, who's not here anymore, one from Daryl Rusk, who is not here at all anymore, and one from Joe Kelly, who's gone on to Green Acres. So, I just want to, someone thought I was kind at some point, so remember that.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further public comment, I'll bring it back to the board. Excuse me, one more.
Alsa Gallagher, Taxpayer Association, we appreciate this. This is really a wonderful thing, and it's really positive. One of the things that we might consider is kindness to taxpayers. What if that? That means that we try to be responsible in our spending, and we try to respect the rights of life, liberty, and property of all our citizens. This is truly kindness to taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Then we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. Is there discussion or a motion?
I'll move to second.
Second. Moved by Supervisor Telfanelli, seconded by Supervisor Mills. Any further comment?
By the way, Mr. Kelly is still around. I get emails from him, so.
Therefore, call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Cares 5-0, and the proclamation which has been read is approved. Happy Kindness Day. Does anybody present that to you?
No.
All right, and we will, it'll be-
I'll send it to them.
Thank you very much Supervisor Calloway. Calloway will send it on. Moving on to public comment. After thirty minutes, I again encourage everybody to be civil, respectful, and exercise your First Amendment rights. But I try to do it in the nicest way as you can. So, we'll open it up. Men, clerk?
Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the thirty-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Thank you very much. And if I could remind everybody, if we could keep, we can't have more than five, but if the queue's got five in it, we'll keep going to thirty minutes. And if we exceed thirty minutes, we will continue at the end of the board meeting. Tom McCombe, you're on.
Good morning. Tom Griffin for the Planning Coalition. Today, I'm going to point out two problems with the general plan introduction. One is that the purpose is too narrow. Government Code Section 65400 indicates that general plan should serve as an effective guide for orderly growth and development, preservation, conservation of open spacelands, and natural resources, and the efficient expenditure of public funds relating to the subjects addressed in the general plan. However, the purpose of the 2016 draft is only focused on growth and development of economic conditions, and economic conditions, excuse me. The plan promotes economic prosperity, protects property rights, enhances productive resources, and enhances innovative economic pursuits. And that only encompasses the element that cover land use, circulation, housing, public facilities, and services and resource production. Sorry, I'm kind of sick. There's more to the general plan than just growth and development. The general plan also includes required elements covering conservation, open space, noise, and safety. Government Code 65302. General plan is also an opportunity to coordinate local budget planning with state and federal government programs. That's Code 65300.9. And the solution is to use the words from the government code to finish the purpose statement in the general plan as follows. The Calaveras County General Plan is intended to serve as an effective guide for orderly growth and development, preservation and conservation of open spacelands and natural resources, and the efficient expenditure of public funds relating to the subjects addressed in the general plan. And number two, the other problem is the reasons for adjusting the plan are too narrow. Government Code 65358 allows the county to amend the general plan, providing that the amendment is in the public interest. The introduction says the adjustments may be made to accommodate changes in economic conditions, population growth, or demographics. These are certainly circumstances when the plan could be amended to allow for additional needed development. But this is just a very narrow spectrum of what's quote-unquote "in the public interest." For example, a general plan amendment might be needed to accommodate a Williamson Act contract for ag land conservation like it was just recently. The solution is to change the sentence in the introduction to read as follows. Adjustments to the plan may be necessary to serve the public interest. And thank you, and please consider adopting these changes when it comes up on your agenda. Good morning.
Tom?
Tom in Casino, Calaveras Planning Coalition. One problem with the draft general plan introduction is that the plan is allowing the continuation and expansion of legal non-conforming uses. The introduction says that uses that were lawfully established but that will no longer be consistent with the general plan update and revised county code, quote, shall be allowed to continue such uses under the non-conforming use provision of Title 17 of the county code. Title 17 of the county code allows such uses to continue so long as they are not interrupted. These can even be reestablished after interruption with a use permit. The introduction also says that expansion of legally existing non-conforming uses shall meet the development requirements of this general plan, unquote. When a previously allowed use does not conform to a new zone, the goal of planning law is to eliminate the nonconformance. The county has failed to do this in the past. Sometimes, when the use is not posing any problems, this involves simply rezoning the site into a zone which allows the use either by right or by permit. On the other extreme, if the nonconforming use creates a public nuisance, then the use can be stopped by the county immediately. Now, there's, what happens in between those two extremes? When a nonconforming use does not pose like an acute nuisance, but does threaten long-term health and safety, welfare, peace, or morals of the community, or creates a significant environmental impact, the use is given a set period of time in which to recover the investments prior to ceasing operations. This avoids the county having to condemn a use and compensate the owner. Also during the amortization period, and this is very important, the operation is not allowed to expand. Expanding such a use is in direct contradiction to planning law. The county's refusal to follow this aspect of planning law caused problems in Valley Springs when the quarry wanted to add an asphalt plant. The solution is to change the first sentence to read that the use, quote, shall be discontinued after a reasonable period, allowing the owner an opportunity to receive the benefit of the owner's initial investment, unquote. The solution is change the second sentence to read, quote, legally existing nonconforming uses will not be allowed to expand in size, or capacity, or production, or duration, or in undesirable impacts, or to add additional nonconforming uses. And the third part of the solution is to add two sentences. When the legally existing nonconforming use is not posing any public nuisance or land use conflict, the site may be rezoned into a zone in which the use is allowed by right or with a use permit. If the legally existing nonconforming use creates a public nuisance, or is in violation of health and safety laws or regulations justifying cessation of operations, then the county will cease the operation soon as possible. Thank you. If we went too fast, a memorandum is forthcoming.
Thank you. Marty?
Good morning. I'm Marty Crane. I'm speaking with and on behalf of the Calaveras Planning Coalition. Today, I'd like to point out a problem with the general plan update land use element. The problem is that it's not clear which lower intensity and density zones will be allowed in which land use designations. A land use element designates the proposed general distribution, general location, and extent of uses of the land for housing, business, industry, open space, including agriculture, natural resources, recreation, and enjoyment of scenic beauty, education, public buildings and grounds, solid and liquid waste facilities, and other categories of public and private uses of land. The objective of a land use element is to set forth a pattern of land use that is coherent and predictable. It should be detailed enough so that all users of the plan can reach the same conclusion of the appropriate use of any parcel of land. Page LU14 includes table LU2 that is supposed to provide basic guidelines regarding which zoning districts are consistent with the land use designations in the 2016 draft general plan. It does identify some of the zoning districts that would be consistent with each land use designation. However, there is a note on the page stating, quote, "Lower density or intensity zoning shall be considered a compatible zone." That policy states, quote, "Less intensive residential and agricultural zoning districts shall be deemed compatible with the general plan's land use designation as an interim zone until such time as infrastructure and services are available to support intended development." What does that mean? Does this mean that lower intensity agricultural zoning district can be compatible with higher intensity residential land use designations? On one hand, it might keep the area in agriculture longer, and the infrastructure needed for development may never reach the parcel. On the other hand, should a ranch destined to become 500 to 900 homes and designated for future specific plan be given agricultural zoning so that current owners can keep their taxes low pending on their future development? Regional minds may differ on the wisdom of this policy. Or, does this mean that a less dense residential zoning district can be compatible with more dense commercial designations, or with more dense industrial designations? If so, this policy essentially creates a residential overlay across commercial and industrial designations that sharply increases the potential for land use conflicts. A senior citizen home does not belong next to a late-night music venue, or an acute source of air pollution that could aggravate-
Thank you very much Marty, I'm sorry.
... and lung disease.
Thank you.
I can't read any faster, but I did bring the-
Joyce?
Morning. Joyce Tekel, speaking for the Calaveras Planning Coalition. Today, I'm going to point out two problems with the general plan update land use element. The first problem is that there is no designation zone inventory or diagram that differentiates the very different types of public land uses. The government code 65302 specifically calls out three types of public land uses separately: education, public buildings and grounds, and solid and liquid waste facilities. The general plan guidelines indicate that these three land uses should each begin in their own land use designations. This makes sense for a couple of reasons. First, because the public land uses, while all beneficial, are hardly interchangeable. Second, it is critical to give the marketplace the correct information it needs to make informed decisions regarding the acquisition of land for investment. Finally, the road and other infrastructure needs will be different for each of these land uses. Comparing the schools to solid waste facilities, they're very different. Because these public land uses are so different, it makes sense to use distinct land use designations, or one land use designation with subheadings like public-waste, public-education, public-office. Only in this way can one determine if the land use designation as mapped is appropriate and consistent with all elements of the general plan. However, the land use element currently lumps these three distinct land uses into one designation, PI-public-institutional. This makes it impossible to determine if sufficient land is properly designated for each distinct type of public use. The solution is to provide a district, excuse me, a distinct land use designation that divides the PI designation into similar types of land uses. For instance, PI-emergency-services, PI-waste, PI-office, PI-education. The second problem is that the community designation guidelines may be developed without community input. The 2016 draft general plan calls for the Board of Supervisors to develop design guidelines for communities. The 2014 draft general plan had called for the community design guidelines to be developed by a community planning process to incorporate community input. This public participation part of the process was eliminated by the planning commission's editing. In disadvantaged communities, that is low-income and pollution exposed, the county is required by law to, quote, promote civil engagement in public decision-making processes, close quote. Design guidelines can affect the ability to walk or bicycle in a community and to be buffered from pollution sources. These are exactly the kind of, quote, public decision-making processes, close quote. The law is intending to engage the public end. Thus, for disadvantaged communities-
Guys, I'm sorry.
... the county's community design guideline process may be illegal-
Excuse me.
-as contrary to a promotion of civil engagement. I'm done. Thank you.
Hey, we all have to be equally proud for everybody.
Good morning. Neil McEwen, on behalf of the Calaveras Planning Coalition. Today, I'm going to point out two problems with the draft general plan update land use element. The first problem is that the lack of standards for hillside development suggests that the plan lacks issue comprehensiveness. A general plan is supposed to be comprehensive in that it addresses development and conservation issues to the degree that they're present in the jurisdiction. Government Code Section 65301 subsection DC, excuse me. For example, because tens of thousands of acres of private land in Calaveras County is comprised of steeply sloped stream and river canyons, the general plan must address standards for the safe development of some slopes and the avoidance of development on other slopes. The general plan will have significant impacts on soil erosion because the planning commission removed the program to develop hillside development standards. The solution is to put back into the general plan the program to draft hillside development standards. These standards should deal with the issues beyond erosion and address interference with water supply and water quality of downgradient wells, and the fire safety mitigation needed for the development on steep slopes where fire spreads faster. Such development should require a use permit that is reviewable upon appeal to the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors. While ninety percent of the permit applications may be perfectly sound, your constituents depend on you to retain the power to condition or stop the ten percent or so that would otherwise be insanely dangerous. The second problem is that the incomplete treatment of historic resources suggests that the plan lacks issue comprehensiveness. The 2016 draft general plan acknowledges that the county includes communities rich in Gold Rush era history that value their heritage. It even sets up a historic center land use designation. One implementation program is to establish a compatible historic commercial/mix-use zone, and the other is to facilitate implementation of state and federal incentive programs for historic preservation. There will be significant aesthetic impacts associated with development in historic centers because the planning commission removed the program for creating historic design standards from the 2014 draft general plan. In addition, the county rejected all the recommendations of local experts to address historic preservation. These include the proper implementation of existing laws. Thus, one would have a strong argument that the general plan reflects a failure to comprehensively address the issue. The solution is for the general plan to include the programs routinely applied in other counties and recommended by local expert Julia Costello. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Newman?
Good morning. Barney Lewin from Double Springs. From my amateur perspective, the main problem with the general plan is we have not had the mintier-harnish report released. I think that would be a real eye-opener. What I really come here, and I think I need to explain myself, is I use this as therapy. I have time to vent my frustrations. I don't have to pay a psychiatrist. I haven't gone postal on anyone yet. Al suggested once I come here and say positive things. I'm not trying to run for office or make any friends. The second reason I come here is to ask questions that I think the public wants to know, mainly about money, how you all are deciding to spend it. And to suggest that I spend as much time reading all the background information as you do is kind of arrogant because I don't get paid sixty or seventy-five thousand dollars a year to do that, but you guys do. My questions can be answered in less than one minute. You all even had a board supervisor many times that came totally unprepared and didn't read the information. And the last reason I come here is to hold you guys accountable. I sit, and I judge, and I observe. I observe and I judge. I know that people don't change. People can modify their behavior for a period of time. They can clean up their acts, so to speak, but as soon as they're stressed out, or they feel cornered, or they're drunk, their true behavior's going to show. And I guess this is the end of my Be Kind, Kindness Week thing. I'm not being kind now, but I feel sometimes that you all don't hear. You don't listen, you don't hear, and you don't respond. For that reason, I'm also going to suggest that once again, you all need to have office hours that the public knows about, where we can come and sit down with you one-on-one, and there can be a verbal exchange of information so that we don't come back time after time repeating the same issues that we have problems with, and that might be resolved by a simple exchange of information. And lastly, because I'm into it, I have some information about the total lunar eclipse that happened last month. It was a super blood wolf moon. And this will help you understand what all of those terms mean. terms mean.
Thank you very much, Ms. Newman.
Thank you.
Ms. Seale and Ms. Whitke.
Good morning, Board. Beth Whitke from D5. I would like for you to consider at some point revisiting the rules that were adopted last fall. I'm feeling like we're stuck in a rut and that we're not going to move forward until maybe we change the way that we communicate with each other. I love the idea of office hours so that we can come and see it, all of you directly, but I noticed during national politics, like the judiciary hearings when they were confirming a Supreme Court nominee, that members of the committee are able to cede their time. And it seems to me that sometimes people have more to say than three minutes will allow. And so if others are able to cede their time, you know, people from the planning commission or other folks can actually finish what they want to say. So I wish that we wouldn't be so militant in those rules and that we could have some discretion. And especially during study sessions, instead of it being competing monologues all the time, that we have an actual conversation. It's so frustrating to come here week after week and feel like we're just in separate echo chambers. So I'd like to revisit that. I would like for it to be a collaboration between the Board and the citizens on how to solve some of our problems. I'm deeply concerned about the people in District 2 being without housing, without options. Now with the bankruptcy, you know, people are living in tents and it's snowing outside. This is unacceptable. We have to get shelters open. We have to help the most needy people in our community. Thank you.
Ms. Seale. How many more speakers do I have? Patty, Al, two more? All right.
When the urgency ordinance was passed, the people of Calaveras County were double-crossed. And so they went out and gathered fifty-two hundred signatures, which the judge dumped after many months. And now we're facing another, well, let's put it this way, they were crossed when the urgency ordinance was passed. Now they're getting ready to be double-crossed. And I am sorry that I, I'm outvoted, but I have to stand here and say what I feel that is wrong, to ignore what has happened here. And we have a newspaper that should be dubbed the Cannabis Courier instead of the Calaveras Enterprise, because they are totally for one side, and that is the pot side.
Al will be our last speaker.
House of California Taxpayer Association. Wow, there's an awful lot to comment on. Could I have more than three minutes?
No.
No. Okay. On the general, on the general plan, a general plan can be very helpful, and especially when it's reasonable. It can be an oppressive document and can destroy our economy if it becomes a dictatorship of the collective. And we're close to the edge of that. So I'd like to remind you that the purpose of government is to protect the rights of life, liberty, and property of all the people, not just the ones you like. Also, if you would refer to the U.S. Constitution, which is superior to our general plan, Amendments 5 and 14 specify life, liberty, and property as being the most important consideration. So if we bear this in mind as we review the general plan, we'll probably stay out of trouble and above all else, do no harm. Does that make sense?
Thank you very much. Seeing no more people standing there, we'll close public comment. I'll reiterate again, I'm trying to apply public speaking opportunities equally for all sides on any subject, and I ask everybody to re-respect one return and stay within the three-minute time period. So we'll move on to consent agenda.
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the Board at one time without discussion. Any Board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Thank you very much. Board members, are there items that you'd like to pull from the consent agenda? This is a very long one. We tried to put a lot of work in there today, so, but some are going to be pulled. Dennis?
Item, agenda item number six. Fourteen? Fifteen?
One second.
Nineteen? Twenty? Twenty-one? Twenty-two? Twenty-three? That's a block.
I really need to look at the line.
Nineteen? Twenty? Okay, fifteen, then nineteen? I'm waiting for Diana. It's okay.
Yeah, she's got to type.
She's got to go through the- Twenty? Twenty-two? Twenty-three? And twenty-seven?
Second.
Twenty-two? Twenty-three? And twenty-seven?
Anybody else? Supervisor Snell?
He pretty much got everything except for twelve, which I think needs to be separated anyways because it's a four-fifths of-
No.
It's not? Okay. Well, I still want to pull it.
Supervisor Snell? Ms. Calaway? Anything? I would like to pull item thirty, and twenty-seven's already pulled.
Do you see that?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to pull number thirty. We'll circle back. Other staff have items they want to pull? Robert? Hey, what?
Number eleven. Number thirty-three.
Number eleven? Number thirty-three? Anybody else?
Number twelve?
Twelve. It's a pull. Very well. So is there a motion on the remainder of the consent items?
I remove the few that are remaining.
Good very much. Second?
I move it.
Moved by Supervisor Mills, second by Supervisor Calaway. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. As far as how we take these on, I'd like to move twenty-seven and thirty till after the OES presentation, so we can sort of take on, they're related, so we'll just take that on together unless there's, yep, any other problem. Very well.
You need to turn on your microphone because you're kind of muffled.
I'm going to move number thirty and number twenty-seven, which were pulled from the consent item, till after we hear the OES update in the regular agenda. Since they're related, we could do that at the same time, have one conversation. Michelle doesn't have to be en masse and stand up and down all day.
I need one second.
Okay. Just for the audience, we will take a break roughly ten, between ten fifteen and ten thirty, depending on the flow, and then we'll re-adjourn. That's when your break will be.
Okay, so twenty-seven and thirty. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very well. Item six.
Item six is from Human Resources to adopt a resolution authorizing changes to the Planner 1, 2, 3, 4, and Substance Abuse Councilor 1, 2, job descriptions.
Very much, Supervisor Mills?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I had a conversation with Mr. Mallor on this one yesterday, and it has to do with the Planner 1 position. This listed on packet page forty, where it states it graduated from a credit college with a bachelor's degree, and it gives specific types of degrees that would be permitted. I took an opportunity then to look at Tooluma County, and they were very quick to use comparative counties when it comes to our salaries or wage and benefit plans. So we should some, to some degree, have some similarity in our position control list in those job descriptions. So I reviewed to Tooluma County, a Planner 1 is equivalent of completion of a two-year degree, or equivalent education, accredited educational institution, with major coursework in planning, political science, environmental studies, natural resource management, and these two are included in theirs, it's not in ours. Watershed management, forestry, or a closely-related field. My concern is this, that if we create a position that has a higher level of requirement, we are going to be, to some degree, limiting the field, which would be our applicant pool in the future. So I want to be sure that we are not putting ourselves in a position where we're going to, to not be able to gain people simply because we've placed too high a bar on that particular position.
G. Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Management. One of the things that we put in place, I believe, at budget last year, we do have a trainee level that I don't believe Tooluma has. And so essentially, we have three levels. And the reason that Peter worked on these revisions was making sure that because we brought back the trainee level, that the one in, the one, two, three was properly aligned. And so that is, that is also one of the reasons for this. And I can let, I can let you, Peter, speak to the rest.
Yes, Peter Mallor, Planning Director. Thank you for the heads-up on this, Dennis. Gave me a chance to do a little more research yesterday afternoon. It's true that the Tooluma County Planner 1 position only requires a two-year degree. We also have the option of a two-year degree plus two years of experience. The purpose, my purpose in upgrading all of these positions was, after several years of recruitment, trying to find qualified individuals, we were getting a lot of applicants that really didn't meet the qualifications that I need to do, get the job done. I looked also at Amador, Mariposa, and Eldorado County, and they all require a four-year degree for their Planner 1 position. We did create the Planner Trainee position. Actually, it was an old position we'd had on the books for a long time, hadn't been, hadn't been used. We sort of dusted that off during the need to hire a lot of additional staff while we were processing cannabis applications. And we now have filled that position on a permanent basis with a new trainee that started last month with, you know, just the two-year experience. So I'm confident that having a four-year degree is not going to put us at a disadvantage. I'll be frank, what puts us at a disadvantage is our salary scale. I know that's not something we can address now, but that is something that all department heads are concerned about, is how do we recruit good, qualified people who want to work here? Comparison, our Planner 1 position starts at twenty-two seventy. Tooluma County starts at twenty-two fifty. Eldorado County starts at twenty-eight dollars an hour. So, and Amador County is twenty-four fifty. So, you know, there's a lot of different factors that go into the job descriptions, the recruitment that we have. I think that to meet the needs of our county for a professional position, a four-year degree, and there is a lot of flexibility we have in the job description, you know, or related degree, and believe me, I've looked at all kinds of opportunities for related degree. We have water quality specialists, we have hydrologists, and someone with, I once hired someone with an English degree background, but it also had worked for a public agency, ended up being one of my best planners. So the ability to think, you know, to use the cognitive process to solve problems that comes from getting a college degree, I think, is important in the world that we live in and work in today in the, in the planning sector. So I would strongly recommend that you go with the four-year degree as recommended, and has been, you know, discussed with the union and my staff and the Human Resources Department. Do you have any questions?
I just have a concern, and that is that if you could go to Tooluma County and, and two-year degrees, I mean, a four-year degree is only worth fifty cents an hour in comparison. We can't be then using Tooluma County as one of those counties when we do wage comparisons simply because of the difference in the job description. I want that very clearly understood, that there's no reason to try to include them in those numbers. And it's, knowing that, it's going to be very easy for someone to get a Planner 1 job in Tooluma County simply with lesser qualifications. I understand why you want a greater qualification in most counties around us, and you're right, they all are four-year degrees. I just saw this as anomaly, and I wanted to be sure that we weren't limiting our applicant pool by stepping into this area, and that there needed to be an open discussion about it. That was the whole purpose in bringing it up today.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Is there further board discussion or questions, Supervisor Mills?
No.
Is there any public comment on this item?
House of California Taxpayer Association. It seems like one of the important things that government does when it gets into planning is to affect the lives of people, their future plans, what they can do with their property, whether they can have a business or not, or, or, so if, if this is true, these are very sensitive positions, and they probably need to be more involved than a college education or the number of years in college. And Peter said that the main purpose for the college education is for the development of analytical skills where you can solve problems. That's really true, and it's well, it's a good point. But might be a better point would be these people that go into this service should fully understand the Constitution, and should fully understand the nature of human rights, especially property rights. And so we would suggest that one of the requirements, either before or after being hired, is that these individuals take a course in the Constitution. Makes sense? Thank you.
Further comment? Same none, we'll bring you back to the Board. Is there any further discussion or motion?
I'll move aside, Mr. Chair.
Move by-
is to affect the lives of people, their future plans, what they can do with their property, whether they can have a business or not. So if this is true, these are very sensitive positions, and they probably need to be more involved than a college education or the number of years in college. And Peter said that the main purpose for the college education is for the development of analytical skills where you can solve problems. That's really true, and it's a good point. But might be a better point would be, these people that go into this service should fully understand the Constitution and should fully understand the nature of human rights, especially property rights. And so we would suggest that one of the requirements either before or after being hired is that these individuals take a course in the Constitution. Makes sense. Thank you.
Further comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Is there any further discussion or motion?
I'll move the side on, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Toffenel.
Second.
Second, and by Supervisor Stoppert. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. Item 10.
Item number 11 is from Human Resources to authorize the Board Chair to sign an agreement with Calaveras County Office of Education for the provision of the Students with a Goal Program in an amount not to exceed $80,000 for a period of January 1, 2018, I'm sorry, July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019.
Ms. Newman, you pulled this item?
Yes, I did. My question is, where does the $80,000 come from? Is that general fund, or where's that money coming from? Then I have a suggestion. If all of these agenda items would note the funding sources, it might save me from having to ask where the money's coming from, because I'm trying to follow the money and find out how home care can get a raise. So what funding source is number 11 come from?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Kristen Brink, Health and Human Services Agency. As indicated in our staff report, the financing is coming from the funding sources that are state and federal sources. One is the commercially sexually exploited children. Amount of money we get to address those needs, as do other counties in our state, as well as the independent living program state allocations.
Thank you, that's in the packet. Kristen, before you walk away.
Okay.
And you know I've been a stickler on this, about where does the funding come from, and give me the org numbers and all of that. And you've done a great job in putting that down, and every time you've made us submit it, so thank you for that, because I do track it. So to say, it says very clearly, financing, no impact to the county's general fund. So, thank you. Thank you very much. Any public comment on this item? Bring it back to the board for the discussion or motion.
I will move the item.
I'll second.
Moved by Supervisor Mills, second by Supervisor Toffenel. Call for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. Thank you. 12.
Item 12 is from Public Works to approve a budget transfer and authorize the Auditor Controller to transfer $300,000 from contingencies to a newly created org key for the removal of dead trees on BLM land as a result of the Butte Fire, requiring a four-fifth affirmative vote of the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Stoppert, you pulled this item?
Yes, sir. I was contacted by a few members of the public, and they just asked me to bring this up, because it does say it's from contingencies, and I did tell them it's an org key starting with 1-0-1-0, so that would be basically general fund. But I just want to say that out publicly, because most people don't read through the entire agenda packet. And I just want to say that, yes, that right now is coming from 1-0-1-0. And then if, you know, there's any discussion on that from anybody in the public, then feel free.
Very well. Supervisor Mills? Has there been any conversation with BLM about potential reimbursement, or what that financial picture would look like with them, or are they just ignoring it completely? I know you've had conversations with them.
We have, if I might.
Please.
We have had, you know, the law on purpose, and they're back trying to catch up, and we'll see what they're doing on Friday. But we've had to have that, they don't have the funds, but we did talk to Mia O'Connell, our lobbyist back in Washington, D.C., and she is continuing to push on this. So we will submit an invoice to BLM, see how that flies with them.
I'm glad to hear that, yeah. That's definitely one of the major concerns from.
I don't think we ought to hold our breath that they're going to pay us back, but we should have.
We should push for it, yes.
The bottom line is that these are trees that needed to probably come down anyway, correct?
BLM, yes, needed to come down.
And is it a health and safety issue by leaving them standing in those locations? Probably yes. So the reality is, if they don't want to take care of the property, if we need to take care of it for them, then we're taking care of it. We're reducing the hazard to the community. So I would expect that maybe we even get our congressman involved, we have to, to help push the issue.
And supervisor, Congressman McClintock has been aware of this and has been helping, but, you know, it's a big elephant to push upstairs.
I understand.
If every, oh, never mind, I'll see public on it. Yes, I certainly want to remind this board and the public that this item is here today because this board directed staff to bring it to us through a study session that was presented by Josh, the Public Works Director. So this is the outcome of that study session, and the direction to staff to do this.
Thank you very much. Seeing no more comments from the board, open the public comment. Ms. Newman?
I just wanted to say, good job. It says from contingencies, I didn't have to ask. And if the last agenda item would have said no county monies involved, that would have been a help, too. But this was very well explained. Thank you.
Supervisor, excuse me, Mr. Sagala.
House of Commerce Taxpayer Association. I appreciate the work that's been done, and I wasn't aware of the degree of effort to try to get BLM to be responsible for their trees. And I think last time this was brought up, I suggested that we write to the President of the United States and let it trickle down. That didn't deliver very well, so our board decided, our Taxpayer Association board, and decided we should write. And in preparing to do so, we contacted our congressman's office and suggested a little different way of going to the department responsible for the interior. And so we're putting together a letter, and since we want to make sure that it's effective, we're thinking twice and writing once, so we're getting some eyes looking at that, so we don't have to write another letter to explain what the first letter intended. But anyway, we really appreciate the effort that's being done to hold the Bureau of Land Management accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment? Mr. Faubry?
Mike Faubry, District 2, just a couple observations, starting with our Congressman, Mr. McClintock. Forget it. Don't even bother wasting the ink. BLM, they kind of fall into the same category. I spoke on this subject when it first came up front, and you could clear-cut a 40-acre parcel that they own, and they probably wouldn't even realize it. So don't plan on getting the money back. Don't plan on anybody from Washington coming to back you up on this, but get it done because it's a public safety hazard. There's a lot of worse things to spend money on than this. Thank you.
For the public comment? Seeing none, or close public comment? Back to board discussion, I'd like to thank Josh for his work in getting this done. Last, we gave you a short timeline, and you got the job done, and thank you. And I appreciate the work that you've been doing to outreach to local contractors, to get things lined up, and appreciate it. And we will continue to fight back in Washington, D.C., and compliments to Mr. O'Connell, who is a real warrior in the forests. If anybody's going to get that money out of D.C., and believe me, it will. Supervisor Stoppert?
With that, I'd like to move this.
Moved by Supervisor Stoppert?
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Toffenel. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. Thank you. Item 14.
Item 14 is from the Auditor Controller to adopt an ordinance rescinding and replacing property value ordinance, Section 2.60.005 of the County Code, and authorize a summary publication.
Thank you, supervisor Mills. The only reason this is pulled is because in the discussion summary, do we have the right date?
Well, we put the date of when it was actually introduced.
In 2018?
Oh, it should have been 19, yeah.
So I'm only asking that we correct the discussion summary to reflect 2019, not 2018?
Yep.
Is it correct in resolution? Okay.
So the resolution? Resolution is correct.
Resolution is correct. The resolution is correct, as written.
It's an ordinance, not a resolution.
Okay, okay. That's it. Very well, we have public comments. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion or motion. Salute.
Second.
Supervisor Mills, second by Supervisor Stoppert. Call for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero.
Thank you.
15.
Item 15 is from the Elections Department to adopt a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement between the Secretary of State and the County of Calaveras in the amount of $199,500 for the purpose of providing state reimbursement funds to assist in the purchase of a new voting system as appropriated by Assembly Bill 1824, Chapter 8, Stats 2018, pursuant to Elections Code 19400 and 19402.
Supervisor Mills? Yes, I'd like to hear from Mr. Turner, the options that we might have with this, and why this decision's made to go forward at this time with looking for these funds.
So Rebecca Turner, County Clerk, Recorder and Register of Voters, Good Morning, Board. The state has allocated each county with so much money to purchase a new voting system, and that was the amount that was allocated to us. They sent us a contract that was due back within 10 days to accept our allocated amount. We're not actually doing anything with the funds at this time besides accepting them. That, yes, we would like this money for our county.
So what are the strings attached to it?
At this point, there's no strings attached unless we plan on spending the money, which at this point, I would have to come back before you to request to purchase a new voting system. So at this time, there's no strings. We do have to have a match when we choose to spend the funds, and we have roughly $150,000 HAVA funds that could be used as a match for the state funds. And that would put the county, if we spent the full amount of the grant, at $50,000, which, again, I haven't budgeted for at this time. It would be in my budget for next year if I was planning to move forward with a system, and I'd be back before you guys to talk about that.
In the discussion, it talks about certification standards.
There's three voting systems that currently are certified by the State of California, Dominion, Hardener Civic, and ESNS, which is our current vendor.
Yeah, it's on page 237 of my packet, but my concern is, is that it also states in the discussion that if the Secretary of State determines that the system we put in place is not acceptable, that we, in essence, will have to give back all of the money which they've given us.
Correct, which is why we would only look at systems that are currently certified by the state.
I'm really having some issues with electronic poll books listed on page 221, and the reason is, is that the State of California, especially DMV, has not been exactly an exemplary idea of how to put together a computerized system. And I see this as potentially disenfranchising voters. I think that the testing that they're talking about here is almost a "trust me that it will work" kind of situation, and I do have great concerns. If what we're working, the system we have, is old and outdated, is it because of its accuracy issues, or is it because of its timing issues? What is the reasons for wanting to move away from what we're doing now?
So the system we're currently on is not certified by the state, so we'd want to move away from it to get to a system that is certified by the state. We're still allowed to use it because it was certified at the time we purchased it. But there's, until you're in a situation when you're running an election and our system doesn't work, I can't say, yes, we have to get a system at this time. I don't want to put the county in a position where we have a system that's, to us, 15 years old, however, it's outdated using dot-matrix printers from the 80s. So I really don't want to be the person in charge of elections, putting the county in a situation where all of a sudden we can't count ballots because it's not running. So yes, right now, it is working. I would like to say that of our voting system at all times. So I think we need to move forward towards a new voting system, so we're not in that situation where our voting system doesn't work.
And you've heard this term before, and probably not from me, about clean voter rolls.
I have heard about clean voter rolls, and I would say that our voter rolls are probably one of the cleanest in the state. Yes, DMV now puts in registration cards, which is not within our control, it's the state law. So mentioning DMV, yes, that's a number-one problem on Election Day, is that the accuracy of some of the registration cards put in by DMV is a problem. We try to stay on top of it. Whenever we know there's an issue, we review our voter rolls, and voters are not put in who should not be put in, as far as we're aware. However, DMV is currently being audited for their own accuracy at a state level, and I believe there may be voters that are not in the system that should be.
And it's the accuracy that I'm very concerned about. You know, when I hear that Los Angeles County's having to purge 1.5 million of voters from their rolls because of the lawsuit, that it took a lawsuit to get that done, that leads me to believe that the state has a problem. If we're going to turn all this over to the state and say they're the ones that have the final authority on what that voter roll looks like, and they've already admitted that they can't control it.
My understanding for why they're having to remove those voters is because they don't send out their three PCA cards that removes their inactive voters, which we have always done. So it's not the same scenario for us as it is L.A. As far as poll books go, that's not necessarily in the same, getting a new voting system does not mean there are new poll books. Poll books would be a separate purchase, and it's entirely separate. A voting system would be simply our vote-counting equipment, and that doesn't impact our election management system either, which has voter registration. So they're two separate systems, and we don't plan on changing our current election management system, which houses the voter registration information.
Is this an attempt to get ready for HR 1?
For the AC450?
I'm talking about the recent House Resolution Number 1, which was the very first act that was done by the House in Washington, D.C. People need to go look at what HR 1 is and what it represents, because I think that there's a dichotic shift that's going to occur with something like that. So I'm just wondering if this is.
So this is in preparation to prevent us having a field voting system, and it's also in preparation of the possibility of moving forward with vote centers in 2020, if not 2022. So at this point, the only thing that the Elections Department is looking at is replacing the voting system.
Thank you. Supervisor Stoppert?
I'm sorry, Supervisor Stoppert. I just had one question, but have you researched the actual cost of any of these three newer systems at all?
We're in the middle of putting together an RFP right now, which we're hoping to go out in March, and in that time, I'll have a better idea of what the cost is.
Thank you.
Just one more, Rebecca. I was going over this because when Dennis started asking his questions, he asked about restrictions, and the restriction is you have to put this money towards the new voting system. So it is restricted money. So I was just looking at the routing form, and it's going into org key 1-0-1-0-0-1-0-0, which is a general fund? Org key? Is that? No? That's separate?
It would be going, so we wouldn't be getting any funds at this time. All it's doing is, yes, we're agreeing to this allocation, we would like to take this money. We do not receive any funds until we have expended funds, at which time we will be reimbursed.
Thank you for the clarity. Thank you.
And again, to the point, reimbursed only if we meet the conditions that the Secretary of State has set forth for these expenditures.
Correct, we would have to do that.
Okay. Very well. No other comments from the board? Public comment? Seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the board for a discussion or motion.
Chair, I really can't support this at this time. I think the bottom-line cost and what the direction is that this is going to take is quite onerous, and I will not be voting in favor.
I will move this.
Motion by Supervisor.
I'll second it.
Second by Supervisor Stoppert. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. No.
All in favor, want to oppose? Supervisor Mills, as they post. Thank you. We're going to take a ten-minute break right now. So we'll be coming back here at ten twenty. Thank you very much. Order?
Item nineteen. Number nineteen is from Code Compliance to authorize a county abatement and assessment lien for the recovery of costs of the abatement pursuant to citation issued to Jesse Rodriguez, Jr., in case number two zero zero nine regarding one two six South Railroad Flat Road, Railroad Flat.
Supervisor Mills? Sorry for the audio.
Can you just click it off for me? Thank you.
I'm sorry about the audio. If you could let people know that if they want to make public comment, they're going to have to be on top of it because we can't communicate back and forth. I can hear that. Nice final tap reference. All right, it's all, screen is being back to order. Supervisor Mills?
Chair, what I would like to do is to bring all of these code cases into a singular discussion, if it is possible, because what I want to deal with here deals with all of them, and I think it's more of a policy matter than it is a procedure matter. I guess that's, are we, are we within our bounds, or is that, can we talk about a policy issue, or just these specific items?
Only on these specific items. As far as hearing them all together, the board, you certainly have the discretion to do that. The public just needs to be given an opportunity to speak on each or all of them before taking the action.
Supervisor Mills, maybe we'll focus on one, and we could add the right questions to bloom out the rest.
That would be fine. That would be fine. I would agree. So the issue at hand here is, is that we are asking for an assessment of a lien for recovery costs, and my concern is, is that I understand there's two issues here. One is an order to abate, and you want to find a way to recover those costs. I just had a recent back-and-forth email regarding a property in District Four. I think that the board needs to be fully cognizant of what are the accrued costs and fines and penalties to this point when these kind of items are brought before us, so we know what that lien amount generally is going to be before it's applied. And if it's a case of taking and approving you going out to do an abatement and the costs associated with that abatement, that is one activity. Applying a lien without knowing what the costs of that lien application are, that's quite another. So I want to be sure that we know, what are we talking about here on numbers before we approve as a board to assess a lien on a property? We could potentially put that property upside down and never be able to recover any costs at all. So I think it just needs to be two separate discussions. Yes, I agree, you need to go out and do the abatements. You've worked to that, to that level. But what those costs are in applying a lien is a totally separate issue in my world.
Good morning, Ethan Turner. I'm the attorney for Code Compliance. As we discussed briefly during the break, the section that deals with this is Government Code two five eight four five. It requires a board hearing prior to the assessment of a lien to recover the cost of an abatement, and I understand the question you're raising, and it's sort of a chicken and egg type of scenario, because an abatement order shouldn't really be carried out by Code Compliance if they don't know that they're going to recover their costs. In this case, all of the abatement orders that are being requested today are cleanups of illegal cannabis cultivation sites that were eradicated pursuant to search warrants. These are just, this is the junk and debris and abandoned employee campsites that were present during the illegal cannabis cultivation that occurred over the previous summer. And Code Compliance brings forth requests for the issuance of an abatement order, and once it's approved by the board, they can get an abatement warrant, and then go out and clean up the site, and they can use that order that you've already issued to get a lien. If they do an abatement order and then have to come back to ask whether or not they can pay for it, you can see where that could be a problem occasionally. As to the typical cost of an abatement, a junk and debris type of cleanup, including hauling off of vehicles, can vary. Usually costs, based on prior experience, eight to ten thousand dollars, and that becomes an assessment lien on the property for total cost recovery.
So, Mr. Turner, none of these properties in question here have accrued any fines or penalties to this point? Is that correct?
No, they were just given a notice of violation citation in order to abate, and the property owners were all notified that they needed to be cleaned up. None of them were cleaned up, and none of them availed themselves of an opportunity to have an appeal before the Administrative Hearing Board and then before the board. So they have failed to exhaust their administrative remedies. The initial preliminary orders of the Code Compliance officers were that there is a violation and it needs to be abated. Those preliminary orders were not appealed, so they're now final, and we're just asking the board for the statutory requirement of its approval to carry out these abatements.
Could you possibly put an estimated cost, and you just mentioned it verbally, in the future Code Compliance agenda items, could you put an estimated cost in there so that the board actually and the public knows what those potential amounts can be?
Yes, I'm getting a nod from one of the Code Compliance officers. He can provide estimates for his staff reports in the future.
Thank you.
Supervisor Cowley?
Fines are not included in the lien, are they?
They are not. Fines are not included in the lien. The Government Code only allows the assessment liens to cover actual costs of abatement.
Thank you.
Supervisor Stoppert?
I just want to clarify that the, these, all of these are contingent on the fact that they had illegal farms during the ban, and they, and they were abated. These other issues that were cited at the same time, illegal camping and so on, are because they were abated of marijuana, and those are things that were cited while they were on the property.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Very much. You have another question?
No, I'm just wanting to be sure that we do have some clarity on these costs. As we are making decisions, we don't have any dollars in front of us. We don't know what it is.
It makes sense, and Code Compliance is cognizant of the possibility that sometimes you can overencumber a property, and at which time it gets sold at a tax lien sale, and the government might not recover all of its costs.
Sometimes that's the reason people continue to violate, and Code Compliance goes out there, because they don't count on continuing having the property in the future.
Right.
Ms. Cowan, you have, you came to the podiums. Obviously, you have something to say on this.
Sorry, just want to reiterate, there's no fines that will be leaned. It doesn't mean that Code Compliance can't continue collection methods in an alternative manner with county council to get the fines, but they will not be an assessment on the property itself. And then we've also isolated a way to track the costs in terms of contractors that would actually go out and do abatement. So those physical costs would be part of the backup that comes to my office in terms of what the lien amount would be. And I would say, you know, trying to identify what the costs are going to be in a staff packet, I mean, I think that they can give you a ballpark, but each property is going to be very different in what the ultimate cost would be. So I would just want to make sure that we're not being so definitive in the staff report, because really, we haven't gone forward with that physical abatement, so we really don't know what the true cost would be. So it's actual abatement costs and then also actual documented staff time. Both of those can actually be assessed on the property. And then this is a teetered program, so what will happen is even though it goes on the parcel as an assessment lien, and they get a bill for it, we go ahead and teeter it. So Code Compliance gets the money regardless of whether it's paid or not. That lien will stay on the property until it gets paid by the property owner or until it goes to a tax sale. And then if it goes to a tax sale and it ends up being a loss, because property taxes generally stop getting paid because they can't pay the code lien or they're not going to. Once it goes to a tax sale, property taxes are paid first. Whatever's left over can be paid off, and so if it's a loss, that loss would be absorbed by the teeter program.
So each one of them is very different, and I understand that. That's why I'm just asking that we have some type of a ballpark number here when we're bringing these items up, so the board can see what it is we're dealing with. That's all I was asking for.
Supervisor Stoppert, you have another question?
Yeah, one more. Maybe Sabrina can answer this. In the last year, how many abatements of illegal marijuana farms do we have on the books so far by Code Compliance?
For this fiscal year?
For not this fiscal year, I'm just saying in the last year or so.
I believe since last April, we've done one for cannabis. Yeah.
Okay.
Are there any more of these that you intend to bring forward that need to be?
Non-cannabis related?
Well, abatements in general, yes.
Yeah, we have four officers working full-time in their respective districts, and they all have pending abatements in the pipeline.
Okay.
So those will be coming on future agendas.
Thank you. Thank you, seeing none. Further comments from the board? Public comment? Ms. Newman?
This may have been covered, but I didn't catch it. Does abatement and assessment include the loss of property? Do they lose their property if they're not able to pay their abatement and assessment? And if that happens, does it become county property to be auctioned off? Is that how that process works?
We'll have a rebuttal at the end. Ms. Newman will answer the specific questions. We'll go through public comment, and then you guys can go up and answer the specifics.
My question is, thank you guys for doing this. I'm very proud to say I'm a Calaveras resident now, because I can see it's starting to move forward. The question I have is, you cannot tell me that somewhere in the state of California, there's not someone going through the same thing in their county. You cannot tell me that there's not people that are bidding jobs like this for other counties. There's got to be some kind of a budgeting example somewhere in some other county that is going through abatements like this. I know they're all different. I understand there's forty cars compared to two cars. I understand there's four hundred plans compared to four thousand plans. But you know what, you guys, there's somewhere, somewhere out there, there's research on this funding on how much these things cost. I agree with Dennis. We need to see what it's going to cost us. This should also come up in the current discussion we're going to have with the new marijuana laws. If we're going to have marijuana here, that needs to be part of it. So I just wanted to find out, why hasn't anybody reached out to talk to other counties of what they're doing about this? Because I'm sure other people have got the same situation.
Mr. McManus?
I just wanted to agree with Supervisor Mills that we've been chasing numbers for a couple of years now on what the costs are for cleanup, abatement, and other things associated with the marijuana industry. And I also agree that if you don't know what the cost is, why are you moving forward with an approval to put an unknown lien on a property? And until it's accomplished, you won't know what the total is. If they're going through and actually doing the cleanup, what if they find something else? What if there's a hazmat situation that comes up? You know, that's like Final Jeopardy, all the amounts, you know, go way up if they have to clean that up. Now, if we want to do it, looking at it backwards, I'm hoping that the board will suggest to the auditor controller that these numbers be kept pristine and available. For instance, if I were to ask for a list of invoices from Dirty Works, which is a company that does a lot of our cleanup, would they be able to provide a copy of the invoice, not just a total, but where they went and what they did on every site that Dirty Works showed up at by county direction? And I think there's a few other contractors out there besides Dirty Works that were contracted to come in, haul, pot off, you know, do different things. Do we have identity for how much that cost and where it was at? So that we don't say, well, it was just, you know, another grow, and it cost eight to ten thousand dollars. Some of them could be a lot more than that, and it may be based on the area, the size, whatever. It doesn't make any difference. That's the only way we're going to be able to get an idea of what this huge failed experiment is costing this county. And the numbers just seem to vaporize right now, and we don't have any way of reconstructing those costs or trying to get it straight. You know, so I understand that what this is, is abatement only, but we haven't gotten to the cleanup, if there's any cleanup, and how much is that going to cost? And when do we find out? And when can we start putting those numbers together? Because if we start going forward with another failed policy to allow regulation, we're going to have to have those numbers before you make a decision. And right now, those numbers, they exist, but they seem to be unknown. They seem to be outside the reach of the public to get a hold of. I don't know if supervisors have any better idea of what those numbers are, but I have been trying for two years to get those numbers, and so far, can't get them. So anyway, thank you.
Ms. Wiki, were you speaking?
I think it's a matter of opinion that the U R was a failed policy. There were problems, but it actually brought in thirteen point seven million dollars through the General Fund through Measure C taxes. I also think that you may find that it won't cost that much at all if people were, they were farming outside of the ban, but chances are, they were using organic materials, and it would cost far less to abate some of these properties. Thank you.
Let's try to focus on the agenda item.
I've happened to seen a couple of the properties in question, and also looked through the agenda packet at the pictures of the ones that I haven't. And from what I've seen, if it would only cost eight to ten thousand dollars to clean it up, the property owner would have done it. I can't even conceive of how much it would cost to do a complete abatement on all the things listed, including, it makes me wonder, some of them have pretty sad buildings on them, and I wonder, does the abatement of these condemned buildings include tearing them down and hauling them away? Or are we just displacing the resident and leaving the hazarded place? And I also have a question that probably Code could answer, well, a lot of people could. But I looked at one of them in the agenda packet this morning, and they listed six offenses, each a hundred dollar a day fine for, I believe, thirty days, and that would have been twenty-four grand, just on its face, right there. That's not part of the lien, apparently. But my question about that is, at what point do the fines begin to accrue? Have they already accrued during the period between when the person got notice, issued a notice of violation, and now? Or do they begin to accrue now going forward after the individuals have been, you know, had a lien assessed? Is that when they begin? So I'd like to know that. And also, as a member of the public, I went through the eight hundred and some odd page agenda packet, trying to get answers to some of these questions, and there's a lot that isn't there. And I understand that a lot of that is because I couldn't look at their appeal hearings because they didn't have appeals. And lastly, I was under the impression that district supervisors were going to act as code liaisons with people who were in violation and had problems to try to avoid them being here now where we are today. And a couple of folks that I've spoken with had never heard from a soup, and there may be reasons for that that I'm unaware of, but it seems like it would be helpful, and thank you.
Further public comment? Al?
Al Scalat, Taxpayer Association. I kind of agree with Dennis. It seemed like we want to have an idea of what, of what the costs are before we authorize expenditures. It just seems to make sense. Needs to be good government. What you might consider doing is ask the Code Compliance to provide an estimate of the cleanup, whether the cleanup is the same thing as mitigation or, I'm not sure, but it should be an estimate. And if they are not able to make an estimate, perhaps a firm that's familiar with that could make an estimate, and that could be provided to the board of supervisors, which will give an indication of the amount of... of the amount of money that they would be involved. Seems to make sense. Thank you.
Ms. Cora? How many more speakers do we have? If you could raise your hand. Very well, you'll be the last speaker.
I think that people that are organizing this thing need to have set figures. And if they don't, it's a matter of rallying effort to not catch our citizens that find themselves in a dire situation. And I feel sad about that.
Thank you. With that, we'll close public comment. Staff, do you want to, any rebuttal or further comments from the public comments?
I'm trying to remember what the question was with regards to, oh. So if, for purposes of putting this assessment lien on, there's no difference between a cannabis abatement or, you know, a building that's falling over or anything. Any type of health and safety issue that rises to the level that code compliance would have to go out and do an administrative citation qualifies to reach the point where there would need to be an assessment lien. It's really at the discretion of the building official with code compliance staff to determine if it rises to that level of a health and safety issue. At that point, that's really a policy decision, and then there is no taxpayer, there's no taxpayer cost, because once you put that assessment lien on, it is specific to that property and that property owner. So at the time that it goes to sale, there's a five-year window of non-payment. Once you've gone five years without making your property tax payments, that triggers a tax sale. So it doesn't become the property of the county so much as it basically needs to go to auction in order to try to recoup the costs that we are required to collect, i.e. the property taxes in any code violation liens. There could be direct charges from sanitary districts. There's a multitude of different types of liens that get put onto properties, right? So once that happens and it goes to that lien sale, then that's when you go and you make a bid on the property, and we're trying to get those charges all paid for in that lien sale. If there's adequate funding to actually have the sale go through that covers everything, there will be what's called an excess proceeds. That excess proceeds would go to, well, is available to be claimed by the property owner or whoever the legal claimant could be on those excess proceeds. If there is no claimant for the excess proceeds, those excess proceeds would actually go to the County General Fund. If there is a loss on the tax sale, then the TEADER program, using penalties and interest that has been accumulated through the tax loss reserve program, will fund the loss. It is kind of a balancing act, because we obviously, as the county, are using the TEADER-funded or the TEADER programs penalties and interest in order to use a whole slew of things for the General Fund. So you have to just be mindful that it is a TEADERed program. So if we are running into a lot more activity with code compliance, then there is potentially a lot more statistical possibility of having sales tax losses as opposed to excess proceeds. But it's just kind of a crapshoot, for lack of a better term. It's not funded by the taxpayer, like I said, so this is very specific to a particular property and taxpayer who owns that property, or a bank if it went into foreclosure, so whoever the legal owner is of that property. So, and in terms of costs, it really just depends. Every single assessment that we've ever gotten is different, and it's because whatever they come across. We have a very difficult time finding auto hauler dismantlers to come up into our area. So we can't really compare what a cost would be in San Joaquin County to cleaning up a property in Calaveras, because we can't get all of the vendors locally. We might have to go out of the area to get them. So it just really is, you know, each one will have to be dealt with separately. And, you know, I do agree, it would be helpful for us just to kind of at least get an idea roundabout in the staff report. It might also be helpful, part of the comments that are being made is, well, what are the fines that have accumulated to date? That might also be helpful. But again, it's understanding those will not be assessed.
Thank you. Other questions from the board or staff?
To follow up with that, so we're writing for this type of work on the TEADER fund. So there could be as many as five years before there's realization on the return?
Yeah, it's treated, the assessment lien is treated exactly like property tax. And so it definitely goes on there. It appears on the property tax bill. There has to be five years of delinquency before the tax collector sells the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And one other point of clarification, these abatements were all done by law enforcement. And the law enforcement search warrant abatements are not subject to liens. They're just, those are just paid for by the sheriff's department.
Supervisor Mills? Again, I would like to just be sure that when these appear, that I have a good, clear understanding of what are the fines and penalties to this point, even though they're not going to be on a lien. I just need to know what that number is and your estimated cost to abate. I have a difficult time in assessing a lien without knowing what that potential lien cost could be. So that's just something that has to be here. I would bifurcate this group with a series of motions if necessary, because I have no problem with the abatement itself. But I have a real problem with giving, putting liens on properties of which I do not know what the number is.
I understand. The code compliance officers have a long track record of abatements and invoices from the contractors who handled them, and the officers who handled each one of these cases have inspected the sites. So they all should have a pretty good idea and should be able to provide that kind of information to you.
Thank you. And this will be probably the first time I've ever complimented a public speaker, but Tom, I want to thank you for your very succinct discussion. I think it was very helpful to the overall conversation. I appreciate it. Ambassador Stomper? Very well. So further discussion or motion from the board?
Chair, I would like to move the order to abate and to hold back on the assessment lien until such time as we know what those costs are.
There's a motion to? Could you say it's?
I would make a motion that we authorize the county to abate this property and to withhold on the assessment motion until such time as we know what those costs are.
I'm sorry, what is the assessment?
That's item number nine, 19. The motion would be that?
Do you want to not clean it? Do we clean it and not lien it?
We're not going to place the lien on the property until we know what those costs are.
I would, I would look for a second for that, but.
I got some comment. I'm sitting here, and I was just, I don't know where this is going, because you can also, on the other side of the coin, say, well, you know what, I want to know what the value of that property is too. Bring that to us. Because I want to know if the cost could be more than the value of the property, and if so, then only do abatement to the cost of the property. Where are we going with this? I don't know. The property needs to be cleaned up. We don't know the cost, or we can give you somewhat of an estimate, probably, like I can when I'm bidding something, the cost of something to do when you're doing renovation work. But the true cost, you don't know until you get in and you clean it up. And then you get the invoices in, and you can total what it costs. But if you're going to go down this path of wanting to do this, what you're talking about, the other side of the coin, again, is how much is the value of the property? Well, you know, it's going to cost $58,000 to clean it, but the property's only worth 30, so do we only do $30,000 worth of cleanup? I mean, what difference, if it needs to be cleaned up, it needs to be cleaned up. That's what this is all about. But, you know, you can go down that route, but trying to make a motion, I would not support the motion as it is. I think going forward, this is, is, is to basically, let's get it cleaned up. And in the future, if you want something brought, staff has agreed to bring something forward in the future with the cost of it, the estimated cost of the cleanup on it forward.
So further discussion or a second on the motion that's before us? Is there a second? Is it seeing no second? The motion fails.
I would move this item, Mr. Chair, as is.
Motion by Supervisor Tuffinelli?
I want a clarification. Supervisor Tuffinelli, would that be all of the code abatement ones?
Yes.
Nineteen.
Nineteen through 20.
We're going to have to go through.
We have to go through each one of those. Okay, so this would be on item 19.
Is that clear? Okay.
Item 19.
Second?
We have a, we have a motion by Supervisor Tuffinelli, a second by Supervisor Coway, a call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So in favor, one opposed, Supervisor Mills. Moving on to item number 19.
No, 20.
Excuse me, 20.
I moved number 20.
But we have to hit the process.
Item 20 is from code compliance to authorize county abatement and assessment lien for the recovery of cost of the abatement pursuant to citation issued to Conrad Gablewitz regarding 200 Indian Ridge Road, McCollum Hill.
Supervisor Mills, you could decide.
Only to continue the discussion from item number 19, so the same would apply to item 20.
Very well.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
It would be to county council. If Madam Clerk was to read items number 20, 21, 22, and 23 right now?
Can we combine them?
And then we can move forward if there's any comment in each one of those, and then we could give a full motion for the rest of them. Is that acceptable?
Certainly, that's fine. Again, the public just has to be given an opportunity. You could arguably say, we're going to take public comment on items 20, 21, 22, and 23 at this time. So any comments from the public, please have your comments for all of those items now. But for purposes of the system that we work as far as motions, it's easier to have an actual motion. I mean, I suppose if you were to do it all in one, you could do it, and then Diane would just essentially have the same mover, the same seconder, and the same vote for all of them. If the board wanted to have, for instance, a different mover, a different seconder, I would recommend you do it, each item at a time for purposes of our system.
My point is that it would be a mini consent. We do consent all at one time, and so if we identify those 20 through 23 as like a mini consent.
Supervisor Tuffinelli, I agree with you, and I know we're spending a lot of time on this, but I'm worried, because we continually get hammered on our procedures and brown act, it might just be shorted in a long run, just.
Your chair, so I just brought it up.
I'd like to move through it and avoid tying everything up. Very well, move public comment, sir.
Good morning, Conrad Gablewitz, item number 20. I'm just trying to get familiar with the process here. I've already done all sorts of cleanup work. I'm going to speak to somebody today about, you know, the details involved to be fully 100% compliant with the county. So I just want to make my presence known today and make sure that, you know, you realize or understand that, you know, I'm on top of it, and I'm doing the best I can, and I'm pretty much there. So I don't know what else to say besides, I'm also going to be hiring an attorney to represent me in the future here, so here I am, and that's what I have to say, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So further public comment on this item? Tom?
Comment and question on this item and the process, as I understand the idea of if you were trying to combine the four like items on the consent agenda into one, I believe it sounds to me like then that would be trying to limit each public comment to three minutes on all four items, not allowing us to comment on them individually, which would be 12 minutes. I don't like that, just say that. And I also just wanted to comment that decisions with so much impact on the people, like Conrad who just got up here, I was a little bit appalled to see them on the consent agenda, that they just get moved through with a stroke of a pen with no discussion. The public isn't even aware of the stakes involved. And something with so much human impact on people, I think deserves to not be on the consent agenda. And I think, oh, one comment that Ethan Turner made about law enforcement doing the abatement, that's true on the criminal portion, but having seen a couple of the sites in question, I can tell you for sure that all law enforcement abates, as they cut the plants, they don't clean up the mess, they don't haul away the hundreds of pots or any of that, that apparently becomes an expense in the form of, you know, a contract with like Dirty Works that will be part of the code enforcement cost of doing the abatement. I just wanted to point out that when you say law enforcement performed the abatement, they just chopped plants. And in this case, I was also interested that the fine was written out explicitly, $250 per plant, which at first I thought, oh, that sounds like the new, never got past 8.06 fine, but it isn't. It's separate affair, so you probably can't answer it, but I'll try to ask the sheriff how they happened to arrive at that identical number. And that's all my comment for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further public comment? How many public speakers do we have on this item specifically? If you could raise your hand. Go now, you'll be the last two speakers. I almost went ahead to somebody else. House Cala Tax Care Association. It looks like on this item 20, we have a property owner who's claiming substantial compliance, and we may have a communications problem. Perhaps we would want to ask code compliance for their facts on the case, in other words, what has been done and what amount of money is involved. Thank you. Mr. McManus?
Just wanted to continue on with something Supervisor Tuffinelli mentioned, that when you start considering what the costs are or the estimate to clean up a piece of property versus the value of the property, that is probably the very last consideration that you want to take a look at. The very first consideration you want to take a look at is the safety of people in the area, what's going on with the property, and if it's going to cost more than the property is worth to clean it up and make it safe for its neighbors, for waterways, streams, birds, you name it, that is the first priority. That property has to be cleaned up, and it has to be cleaned up properly. You can't leave a toxic site sitting out in the public and say, well, we never would have recovered the money to pay for it. Tough. You've got to clean it up. Along with some of the other issues, it's too bad we don't have like a clearinghouse or repository for all this information, because there still are many parts to what the cost is. The sheriff's department does whatever they do. They incur their cost. Whether it gets passed on or not, we don't know. Code compliance does the same thing. We also have state agencies that come in, like Department of Fish and Wildlife, Hy-Dat, DOJ, IRS, that come in and take action on this. And there's a formula for the county to get a share of the funds or the fines that the feds pick up by doing this. Where do we account for that money? Do we know what we're getting off some of these interactions or inaction by the federal government or the state government? We don't know. And when you talk about, well, you know, it's going to take five years before you can sell property, I think that if you go back and look, the county cannot force the sale of a property after five years of non-payment of property taxes if a bankruptcy is in place. That freezes that action right there, and it goes on until the bankruptcy is settled, because now it's under the control of a court. So I don't think you can say, well, in five years, we're going to be able to do all this. I don't know that that's always going to be the case. But again, this illustrates how many pieces there are in this puzzle. And if we're ever going to get an idea of moving ahead? gonna get an idea of moving ahead with some other plan, all these pieces have to be brought together. We have to know what the income is, what the cost is, what the exposure is to the county, what the exposure is to the public. All of that has to be considered. You can't just really know they say, well, we're gonna pay this, this one's gonna happen over there, we'll put this one off for five years. Everything gets lost. It just turns to vapor, and then every time we look at this, we have to recreate the wheel by going back and trying to rebuild what the costs were on every single project, and I hope that the board does something to kind of consolidate this action. Thank you.
Thank you. Very well, bring it back to the board for discussion. Are there any questions for the questions for staff or motion?
I'll move all of these items.
We're gonna get a little minute time.
Okay, I'll start out with twen- twenty.
I just have a, normally, code enforcement is quite generous in the timeframes that they give people, and if the property owner in this case is doing something, I'm assuming code enforcement is going to take that in consideration.
Good morning, Sabrina Cable, Code Compliance. Again, I just wanted to state for the record that the property owner was issued a non-punitive notice of violation on October twenty-third, 2018. The property owner signed for it on October twenty-fifth, 2018, and today is the first time that we've heard from him. We have not received any evidence of cleanup, but we're more than happy to work with him from here on out to avoid the county having to abate, which is always our preference.
Your usual modus operandi.
Correct.
Thank you.
Before you walk away then, so what you're basically telling us is that although the board may authorize an abatement action here, does not necessarily mean that will occur?
Correct.
Thank you. Any comments from the board or a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Supervisor Callaway. We have a first by Supervisor Stopper, a second by Supervisor Callaway. Further discussions? None. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Four one, Supervisor Mills opposed. Item twenty-one.
Item twenty-one is from Code Compliance to authorize county abatement assessment lien for the recovery of costs of the abatement pursuant to citation issued to Fidel Gomez, Jr., regarding six zero eight Smitty Lane, West Point.
Very well, Supervisor Mills, you pulled the item.
Discussion is the same as the previous two.
Very well, further discussion by the board? Public comment?
Just your own question for my comment, if you would be so kind as to ask staff to clarify for the public, like Sabrina Cable just said, that they issued a non-punitive notice of violation, and that if Supervisor Mills, I believe, just got, or we somehow got clarity that you're authorizing the abatement order doesn't necessarily mean it will go ahead. Does fine, do the fines begin to accrue at the point, at what point do the fines begin to accrue? That's the question I'd like to get clear on, if that's possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Further information from staff?
Fines begin to assess as stipulated on once an administrative citation is issued. Our current administrative citation is a three-in-one notice, which is a secondary notice of violation in order to abate an administrative citation, and typically, depending on severity of violations, we're giving twenty days' notice on that citation before fines assess. So in this case, the Smitty Lane property in the previous item, they were given non-punitive notices of violation, which inform you of the violations of the property, what can be done to abate the violations, and what escalating enforcement will occur if you don't comply with that notice. So then, a secondary notice of violation in order to abate an admin, admin citation is issued, giving twenty more days, and on the twenty-first day is when fines assess.
That's when, on the twenty-first day is when they begin?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good.
Bring it back to the board, is there further discussion or motion on item twenty-one?
I'll move this item, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Tuffinelli.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Stopper. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Four one, Supervisor Mills opposing. Item twenty-two.
Item twenty-two is from Code Compliance to authorize county abatement and assessment lien for the recovery of costs of the abatement pursuant to citation issued to Jaget Pavritam Dasa in case number two-two-one-one regarding the property located at four-six-zero-zero Esmeralda Road, Murphy's.
Supervisor Mills, you pulled this item.
Discussion is the same as before.
Very well, further discussion by the board? Public comment? Anybody like to comment on item twenty-two? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Further discussion or motion?
So moved.
Moved by Supervisor Callaway. Second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Stopper. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Four one, Supervisor Mills opposed. Item number twenty-three.
Item twenty-three is from Code Compliance to authorize county abatement and assessment lien for the recovery of costs of the abatement pursuant to citation issued to Tao Michael Etall in case two-two-seven-one regarding the property located at APN zero-two-zero-zero-one-zero-five-three on Blossom Lane in railroad flat.
Supervisor Mills, you pulled this item.
Discussion is the same as before.
Very well, board discussion, questions? Public comment on item twenty-three? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion or motion.
I'll move this one.
Moved by Supervisor Stopper. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Callaway. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Here's four one, Supervisor Mills voting against. All right. We'll move on to.
Item thirty-three.
And we're gonna move those back to you, yes. Item number thirty-three.
Item thirty-three is from the Administrative Office to authorize purchase order to Big Valley Ford of Stockton, California, in the amount of forty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars for the purchase of one F-250 crew cab, four-wheel drive for marine safety, non-general fund, AB four-four-three.
Chair, we've got too much conversation going on. I'm sorry, I have a petition. If we could keep conversation down, everybody makes it easier for us to hear and work up here. Ms. Newman, you pulled this item?
I just had a comment. On this agenda item, it says non-general fund money, so that answers what I was requesting before, and I thank you for that designation.
Thank you. So further, very well, board discussion? I do have a question, since I noticed that we've, do you have a moment? Yes, sir. Captain Ballard.
Morning, Mr.?
I just thought I'd catch you with this question. I noticed that Ford is now coming up with a reinforced rear section to the F-150s and the Explorers on their place packages. Is this gonna be something that will be included on the F-250 that you're purchasing, or is...
No, it'll be used just primarily for towing the boats and that's it.
Okay, and the reason for Ford to do that was because of the rear enclosures to make them safe up to seventy miles an hour being hit from the rear?
I would imagine so, sir. I'm just buying.
That is something, it's something they just came up with in the last couple of weeks, so I just was wondering if that was included on this F-250. It's not.
No, it's not.
Thank you. Thank you. Further questions for the board? Seeing none, there's a public comment. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board, is there a motion for a... So moved. Supervisor Mills. Second by Supervisor Stopper. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero.
Can we just take a couple of minutes so they can set up?
Let's all stand up for five minutes.
Item thirty-six is from the Office of Emergency Services. Receive an update on disaster recovery activity throughout Calaveras County for firefight two thousand fifteen, tree mortality two thousand fifteen, and winter storms two thousand seventeen.
Good morning, Board. Michelle Patterson, OES Director for Calaveras County, Joshua Pack, and I are here today to do the update for disaster recovery efforts, and I'm gonna turn it over to Josh.
Morning, Chair, members of the board. My name is Joshua Pack. I'm your Director of Public Works and Transportation, and I'm gonna do the first part of this. I do want to highlight that there are a couple of other board items coming up subsequent to this, and we'll be discussing some of these projects in more detail. However, I will touch on each of these briefly. This slide, again, we've been doing these for a number of months, so a lot of this information is building on what's happened, so what I'm gonna highlight is some of the new stuff that's happened over the last month or two. So, and that's highlighted in the red here, so there's two different, the way the federal funding works for disaster recovery for roads is, there's two different funding sources and two different disasters. So firefight and the two seventeen winter storms are the two disasters, and the two funding sources are through the Federal Highways Administration and through the Federal Emergency Management Agency. The acronyms for those are FHWA and FEMA. So the first part that I'm gonna talk about relatively briefly is the disaster stuff from FHWA, all the projects that work with that. The reason we're doing that is we're trying to attack those projects as a single project. I believe there's twenty-three or so projects, and if we, and they're all relatively small sums of money. If we tried to tackle those as individual projects, we would be spinning our wheels, spending a lot of unnecessary time, especially because the projects are all very similar. A lot of pavement repairs, some minor culvert repairs, things that are all under the guise of the same scope of project that one contractor can complete. So with the FHWA, and I'm gonna go next to the, to the roads on, on the FEMA side of things, Jesus Maria and Mountain Ranch or two, there's other roads in that. We're in the process, we met with Caltrans last month to get clarification on teaming these. Caltrans was very supportive of that. We have a couple of environmental document paperwork that needs to get done with two or three of the twenty-three or so. That paperwork is in, we're waiting on a relatively quick response from Caltrans. Again, we're planning in the next month or two to solicit design services for this. The design's gonna be pretty straightforward. When you repair a road or fix a culvert, it doesn't require a significant amount of engineering detail. So those documents will get put together pretty quickly. Our hope is to get this package together, get it approved through FHWA, and get a project out to construction sometime this summer. The next group of projects I want to talk about are a couple of the winter storm projects. There's, these are through FEMA. There's five projects in total that we're working on. A few of these you've seen pretty recently because they've come to you for approval. Canyon View and Hova Road are two of those. Both on, both of those were approved for contracts to begin design and environmental and right-of-way work in January two thousand nineteen. We've already begun and done quite a bit of work on these projects on Canyon View. We've done some of our initial site assessments. As a matter of fact, we had moved up the schedule to do some of the geotechnical investigation at Canyon View, and then Mother Nature decided to come along and dump two feet of snow on the project site. So we're gonna be waiting a little bit until the snow clears to get a better shot at that, but we're still, we're moving aggressively on that one. On Hova Road, project's already been designed. We've actually done some initial hydraulic studies on this with some alternatives. We're hoping to have those done here in the next month or so, have a clear alternative in place for that project. So as you can see, shortly after your award in January, we started very quickly and aggressively at tackling that, these projects. Gwin Mine falls under the same boat. We have a couple of alternatives. We think that's a relatively straightforward project, and again, we're moving aggressively to deliver all these this summer. Now, Blagan and Murphy's, again, I have additional items and subsequent discussions with you here coming up about these. I will touch on these regarding the approval side. We do have, and you will be considering contracts for each of these, for both Blagan and Murphy's, subsequent to that, so assuming that the board does approve those contracts, we actually have meetings already scheduled for tomorrow and Thursday. So as I said, we like to move aggressively, we are doing so. The, part of the initial efforts with that will be determining alternatives to move forward and reaching out with the public, with public meetings on those alternatives to get feedback before selecting a preferred alternative. Murphy's falls under that same boat. We have a contract with you subsequent, we'll be talking about here in a few minutes. And again, assuming approval from that, we'll be aggressively starting later this week. So in summary, we have, my goal, and I presented this to you in January, our goal was to have all design contracts in place for all the FEMA locations by February two nineteen, 2019. Assuming the board takes action on that today, we will meet that goal. Matt Boyer, the previous interim Director of Public Works, is acting on the project management of this. He's doing an excellent job of making sure this project stays on task. One of the things we've talked about as a theme for these projects is to scope alternatives that can be delivered quickly and with minimal risk to the public and to the county. When I say context-sensitive project design, I mean the projects need to meet the environment in which they're being constructed. We don't need to build a three-million-dollar bridge on, on a, on a small road. So those are the sort of things we're looking at, making sure we're building it appropriately. There do remain hurdles. There are a number of regulatory agencies that we must navigate those waters. With that said, the approaches we're selecting and pursuing are designed to give us the greatest likelihood of delivering all these projects in two thousand nineteen. So again, as I mentioned, I will have additional information on both Blagan and Murphy's subsequent to this. With that said, I'll move it on to Michelle to provide a feedback on the disaster recovery with tree mortality.
So I just wanna thank the board for having the two items that were pulled off consent included in this discussion. I think they fit well here, so when I'm done giving the update for this PW-78 tree removal, I'm happy to address the questions that are related to that particular item that was on consent. Where we are with PW-78, we did have the amendment for the Phillips and Jordan contract on consent today, which was pulled off consent, so we can discuss that. So where we headed with this was, as soon as we had this one in place, we already have the Tetra Tech contract in place for the monitoring of the, the work that needs to occur for the biological and cultural and archaeological monitoring. That was approved by this board in June of 2018. Right now, we're waiting for these trees to complete the EHP or Environmental Historical Preservation Process. I was in receipt of the archaeological treatment plan for this phase several weeks ago, to which I provided feedback to FEMA, and so it is now going through the process of going through the State Historic Preservation Office and some of other of the federal agency hurdles as it pertains to, to the cultural piece of this. I had hoped that we would have this project underway in January. Unfortunately, apparently, the archaeological process moves a lot slower than we'd all like. So with that, I would like to turn it to the board for the discussion of P and J.
We're gonna take that item after.
After, okay. Sure.
Same with TETR-Tech.
Okay. So for this PW-99 is the debris and ash removal, the insurance recovery project. You have a, an amendment to the Tetra Tech agreement for insurance recovery on the consent calendar today. It was pulled off. Basically, what we needed to do is to extend the term of this contract so that we can close out all of those activities up to and including ensuring that the remaining fifteen-hundred-ish trees don't require any additional duplication of benefits work on them. So with that, we're just, as soon as we can get that contract, the amendment approved, we can move forward and close out those activities and get the information from Tetra Tech. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Tad Mason from TSS Consultants to give us the overview of our tree mortality project.
Good morning, Tad Mason Forester. This is just a brief update on the tree mortality program. In 2018, we completed six projects, which came to a total of a thousand sixty-four trees. We're about to go through a series of projects, explanations here of the projects that are in play. Just reiterate, the 2018 projects, we're really focused on a highway four corridor where we had public safety concerns due to concentration of residents and dead trees along county roads. So we're now expanding out into more rural parts of the county, and I'll be going through the list here on those, on those projects. So first up is Four A, that's Big Trees Village, north of Board's Crossing, Sky Hall Ranch. We've got a little over seven hundred and sixty trees that are targeted for removal. About eighty percent of this project has been completed. Right now, we're snowed in up there, so we will not be completing this until, till spring. Four B, it's a small project up at Sherman Acres, all the way to county lawn. 4B, it's a small project up at Sherman Acres, all the way to the county line. This is also under snow. It's about 40 trees, and we hope to implement this later on this spring. Project 5 is Lakemont, Metamont, and White Pines. This was 340 trees. We're 90% complete. We've had some delays due to weather, but hope to have this done by the end of February. Project 6, West Point, this is a larger project, 642 trees. It is under contract right now, and weather permitting, hope to have this going in early March. Project 7, another large project, 1,071 trees. This is being implemented starting today. We have a pre-operations meeting in Arnold. This is in the Avery and Murphy's area, and weather permitting, we hope to get with the program there. Project 8, Willseville, Glentown River Flat, another large project, 854 trees. The contract has been awarded. It will likely start up in mid-March. Project 9, BLM. Not to belabor this, but BLM has been less than cooperative, and this has been challenging. We had maps and tree lists to them in October, and not much movement. So, barring another shutdown possibly this Friday, we're hoping to continue to pursue this, but challenging the agency. I'm not going to dwell on that. Project 10, let's talk about a cooperative agency. Forest Service has been excellent to work with. This is reflective of the status last National Forest, Calvaroish Ranger District. Project 10 is underway. They're over, actually right at 400 trees. And we are 80% complete. Currently snowed in, however, but once weather cooperates, we'll get back with it. 11 and 12, these were just awarded. This is also Forest Service project up on Summit View. And looking at 330 trees, as you can see, hope to start on this weather permitting here by mid-month. On the 13 through 15, this is the last of the Forest Service projects. For this current go-around, we have the ITB into contracting, and hopefully contracting will have this out here soon. This is a larger set of projects, 616 trees. Project 16 is Avery Sheep Ranch, 166 trees. We have a pre-operations meeting today to get this project started and hope to have it completed by late March. Other projects that we're working on as far as getting the right-of-entry forms back from property owners are 17 through 21. These are all outside of Butte Fire, of course. Some are west of Highway 49. And we're hoping with ROE return rates to implement those sometime in March. Last project, this is a cleanup project for the balance of the county on BLM ground. We've already got the trees marked and the project maps laid out. Depending on how Project 9 goes with BLM, we'll follow up hopefully with this project, Project 22. We're still seeing tree failures across the county. This is an example of trees failing off of BLM ground onto Skull Ranch Road. While I know the weather that we're having would sense that the drought is over and life is good and the forest is happy, that really isn't the case. We're still seeing tree mortality. And per our work with the Director, we're going to continue and do a second survey of the county, that we've already started on that with Project 23, to go back through and clean up the rest of the mortality as best we can. So, that's the path forward. Summary, I mentioned we completed six projects last year, 1,062 trees. Additional projects are currently underway county-wide. We continue to have some challenges with right-of-entry forms coming back in. We're concerned that some of these property owners feel that this is a compliance opportunity for the county, which it is not. And we've done our best to articulate that. We continue working with the Director to issue press releases on a monthly basis. So we're interacting with the media to get the word out, hey, this is full tree removal of hazards on your property that could impact county infrastructure, county roads. So, we're trying to get that message out as best we can. In the course of the projects that we're implementing, we've had no safety issues with the tree crews, very important, or with the public. We've had a few incidental property damage issues, a fence being damaged or a breather valve on a septic system, things like that. All of them have been repaired. So, it's, I would say it's going pretty well. Today, we have 10 projects active treating 3,000 trees targeted. So I just want to let you know those are, the bids have been awarded. We're just waiting for the weather to be a little more cooperative. Our foresters are ready. And we hope to be active again here soon, weather permitting. So, with that, I will take questions.
I have, thank you Supervisor. Shucks. Project 4B, Sherman Acres, will this include removing of logs and slash?
Absolutely. That's our protocol.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Unless of course the property owner wants the logs. I mean sometimes they use them for fire.
No, you're not going to get in there because they hiker snowmobile into Sherman Acres.
That's right.
And we don't snowplow above Miko, do we? Didn't know if there were any changes. Project 7, Avery Murphy's, the 1,000-plus, where is this on? And Avery Murphy's, is this Avery Sheep Ranch, Murphy's Sheep Ranch? Where is, where are these?
I have a map in front of me here for this project, but...
If you get that, could you just email it to me? Thank you.
Yep, we can do that.
Again, this is logs and slash removed.
That is the protocol, yes.
The one on Project 10, 11, 12, I like the fact that you talked about the cooperation with the Calvaroish Ranger District. I'm very supportive of our Ranger District. But could you just go into a little bit, what does that look like? Is this Forest Service land that the Butts County Roads?
That is exactly the case, Supervisor.
And I guess I'm missing something coming in late on this process. How is that, who's paying for that? Is that FEMA paying for that? Is that...
No, this is all state funds through Community Disaster Funds, CDAA, as administered by State of California, OES. And so the county reimburs 75% from that fund, and then the balance 25% is from CAL FIRE. So 100% reimbursement through the state comes back to the county to cover these costs.
So, it's really no different than BLM. The Forest Service is not paying to have these trees down.
That's right.
They're all taxpayers, so it's, which pocket are you getting it from?
Good point.
So, okay, I just wasn't clear. So, this is, it's going to be worked on Sheep Ranch and Avery area, number 10? Is that, that's Avery Sheep Ranch Road?
And Valley View.
And Valley View, okay. And 11, 12, if you know where those are, if you could just send me so I have...
Absolutely. We'll send the maps.
An understanding of where they are. It's always nice to give people good news. And 16 says Avery Sheep Ranch, so I'm assuming that's another Avery Sheep Ranch Road?
Yes.
And that goes into District 2, so...
Maps.
Yeah, just, you can do my side of Avery Sheep Ranch first, please? I didn't see you go on this item.
Does that require a vote?
Yeah, at least.
She has a sign that says Marina's District ends here.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, let's see, get back to where we were. So just a couple of other updates as they pertain to...
I just have one question, and it was for Josh. On Items 9 and 22, we're talking BLM trees. Are any of these trees part of the funding we just agreed to earlier?
No, they're not.
I didn't think they were. I thought I would ask those.
My question, maybe more of a comment. There's 4,800 trees identified here, plus more to come. Correct?
Correct.
Attending Forest Fire Safety Council and talking with many of the other firepeople, I know there's a couple of them in the back of the room. I think it's important that we start thinking about mapping these in a GIS layer. And incident commanders would very much appreciate knowing where these fuel reduction projects are going and also where the fuel breaks are occurring. And get them all on one map, or you can just pull them and you can look at it and you can see what your train looks like. Would be very, very valuable. So I don't know where the funding would come from to do that, but to have all of this information readily available on an incident would be beyond measure valuable.
So, I have actually been working with CAL FIRE and with the support of Stan Moore. He's offered up his GIS team to undertake this project. They actually, CAL FIRE actually has a substantial amount of the data needed to create such a map, a tool. And so we're working collaboratively. We actually just met last week, and the project is much farther along than any of us actually thought that it was. So, we're working towards that, absolutely.
And I have another reason for saying that, is because in the past, we have had fuel break projects that when the individuals involved in the project went away, they took their brain with them. And so, all of the information kind of fell away as well. And I just want to be sure that the level of activity that we're doing in this county is well documented, well understood by everybody. So if we need to maintain something in the future, we know, when did we do this, what level did we work on, and when are we going to have to come back and review it again? This is an ongoing process now. This is not just, we bought a new car, great, we're going to drive it until the wheels fall off. This is, we've got to be maintaining these projects as we think into the future. And hopefully the state will provide the adequate funding that we're going to need to ensure that the maintenance is part of this discussion, and it's not just a one-time, one-shot.
Okay, so we are working towards that, and hopefully it'll get done pretty quickly here before we get fire season going. So just a couple of other updates as they pertain to disaster recovery. On January 1st, 2019, the California Emergency Services Act was amended, and it went into effect on January 1st to extend the number of days that each disaster declaration needs to be continued by. So, previously, it was every 30 days that the governing body had to readopt the continuing resolution. They've extended that to every 60 days. So this is more of an FYI and perhaps agenda management thing on that one. And then, in talking with Josh, and particularly because Public Works has taken such an aggressive approach for the roads projects, and as he mentioned earlier, there are additional presentations that he will be making today regarding these projects. We're recommending that we reduce the frequency of these updates from monthly to quarterly. This is the 12th one that I've participated in. And so, I think, you know, as each of these projects requires contracts to come to the Board for discussion anyways. So we're just making that recommendation at this point.
Yeah, and I would highlight to that that there is a website on OES's page that has updates to these information. And that recommendation does not affect that. So as projects get updated, as new milestones, we still do our normal efforts through public outreach, you know, whether it's flyers for the local residents, whether it's public meeting outreaches, whether it's information on the website as new thresholds are established. So, that information will still be there, but we'll look from direction to you if the quarterly is appropriated this time or if you continue to like the monthly updates.
Are you saying the updates will be on the OES website or Public Works?
So currently, they're on the OES page, just because that's where it was housed historically, plus because there's a blend of both. So, the idea was to have one site that had all of it. It's currently on the OES site. I believe we have a link on the Public Works page. If we don't, I'll ensure that that link's put on there to that. So all residents are pointed to the one page with all that pertinent information.
Thank you. I would recommend that we keep it where it is and we focus on checking the boxes and closing out these disasters. Then pretty soon, we won't have to have these updates at all, right? Everything will just be peachy. But I do like to keep up on this.
Well, I disagree. I feel like this is, there's a lot of time and effort that goes into doing this on staff's time. And if the updates are on the website, then it's going to be hard for us to do it, to look it up. And I would rather staff be doing things to accomplish projects versus just giving us the updates. I think we can, we've pretty much gone along. I mean, I really appreciated this, and you've got me started, and I don't think I need to hear from you. If I want to know, I'll go to the website. That's why I ask. I just think we overuse staff.
I will just have to disagree when we can pull the Board on this. I just think after two years of watching this process, I think it's something we need to stay close to. And we're talking about very big contracts, so... Anybody else have an opinion?
I just want to get clarification. The contracts will still come to the Board. This is not, that's still going to happen. But this is what I hear them asking, that they don't, they come to us quarterly. We'll have a chance to look at it as contracts come, which is why I felt that it was appropriate to move to a quarterly basis.
I will just disagree.
I will agree with Marita.
Ms. Raisner?
I will agree with Marita.
Ms. Raisner, stop her.
I agree with Marita.
Perhaps it's just because my district burned down, I paid greater attention to this and some of the holes that have happened historically in the process, but we'll move to quarterly updates. Chair, should there be a need to go back to monthly updates? I'm certain that the staff will be aware of the need to do that, and they will reach out to us and be professional in telling us that there's a problem. But as long as there's no issues, everything is flowing along at their normal rates, there shouldn't be a reason to be expending your time sitting in that chair right there.
Or that one.
Rather than being, doing what you are supposed to be doing.
The way of the Board is clear. I will trust but verify, because when I haven't verified, things haven't worked out historically. Not to the two people in front of us, but if that's in the presentation, we'll move on to the next item. Do we need public comment on that? It was just a...
Are we...
Two items. Is there any public comment regarding disaster update, OES update?
Mike Fawley, District 2. Full disclosure, it doesn't take a lot to confuse me at times. With that in mind, the Butte Fire Services report, PW-99, debris and ash removal. It's primarily insurance recovery. I'm going to round numbers off. Total project cost $416,000. The county is paying $30,000. And Amendment Number 30 on the agenda, and then item is quoting, this... In Amendment Number 30 on the agenda, and then item is quoting, this amendment only extends the term. But yet, on item number 30, today's agenda, I'll read this.
I'm sorry, can you just give me a second? Could you catch me up? Where are you at on this? Are you reverting to?
I'm on the, this report.
PW99.
PW99.
Supervisor, Calway squared, no way. Keep going.
Okay. I hope that doesn't take away from my time.
We stopped it.
Around the office of numbers, $416,000 total project cost, county $30,000. Over to the right, and note, this amendment only extends the term. Item number 30 on today's agenda, and I'm going to eliminate a few of the words, but I will quote exactly, "to execute the First Amendment to Professional Services Agreement between Calvers County and Tetra Tech, for an amount not to exceed $855,000 for the period of 8/2, 2018 through June 30, 2019." I don't see these numbers balancing out here. The total project cost is $415,000, but here, they're asking, this says, "for an amount not to exceed $855,000," for basically 11 months. So, what's it going to be? $855,000, $416,000? How much more is our $30,000 going to increase? And what the caveat to that is, Tetra Tech, I realize these are federal funds, not much is coming out of our pocket, but Tetra Tech has been called on the carpet recently in their involvement with emergency cleanups, milk in the system, and to me, this is just another one of their moves. But they're getting $855,000 for the recovering insurance, primarily insurance recovery, it says right there. At what point does the money we're giving to them exceed the money that they're recovering for the county? I know, I personally wrote them a check two years ago. You know, Tetra Tech's playing a game here, folks, and we're all victims. So, I look into this. These numbers just do not jive.
If it's appropriate, I can respond.
We'll go through all public comment, and then we'll have a battle. Any other further public comment? Very well, bring it back, staff.
Okay, so part of the issue is when you have FEMA project worksheets, and there are amendment that, amendments that need to be made to those project worksheets, they go through a reversion process. We are currently working with CAL OES to confirm that we have received a reversion request, which then increases the dollar amount of this project. So, the total that you're seeing on this, on this slide right here, is what the original project worksheet was approved for. We're waiting for the amended version of that to come through. And I've been working with Rebecca Callen in the auditor's office and CAL OES since November to work through that process. So, that's where I think a little bit of the confusion lies. As it pertains to the cost, they have not exceeded, they've, there's still significant dollar amounts left in their contract. This is just to close out those activities. Further, the, oh, I lost what I was going to say. Maybe it'll come back to me in a minute, but.
Not till next quarter, though.
Not till next quarter. There you go. We have recovered over $7 million in duplication of benefits, so I don't really know what the math is on that one. We're required legally to recover the duplication of benefits, and that is what we have done.
We can circle back on that when we get to item 30.
Sure.
Because I have questions. Mike, do you want to wait till 30, when we talk up Tetra Tech? Very well. There is no action on this item. We'll move on to the next agenda item.
Item 27 is from the Office of Emergency Services, "to authorize the Board Chair to execute Amendment 2 to Professional Services Agreement between Calvers County and Phillips and Jordan Incorporated for hazardous train removal services due to the Butte Fire Incident, for an amount not to exceed $10,856,225.39, an increase of $1,081,172 from Amendment 1, and extending the term until June 30, 2019."
You and I both pulled this, would you like to go first? Well, my concern is with the financing piece of it, and that you're showing where the funds are appropriated from. We've had cash flow issues in the past, and I want to ensure that there's sufficient funding within that org key to cover the potential cash flows that might be required here in the near future. If not, then we're going to have to come back before the board to change that appropriation limit. And that's something that has not been done regularly on this, on this particular item, and I would like to see it start happening. So, my concern again is, is that is there sufficient funds appropriated in that org key to handle your cash flow?
I don't have the budget in front of me right now, but I can certainly return to you at a later, at a later time after I've looked up that information.
Even if you throw me an email, just so I understand the cash flow issue, because that has been, like I said, one of those things we've had some long discussions on in the past. Thank you.
And I would agree with Supervisor Mills on this item, with his point.
To continue my conversation along these lines, is that where, where money is being appropriated from, this board needs to be aware that that appropriation's occurring. It isn't something that we find out about after the fact. And I, you know, if we want to be transparent, we've got to be sure that the public and the board is aware. When we're in shortfall, come back to us, talk to us, tell us what you need to do to correct it, but we cannot be borrowing from accounts without having a conversation at the board level.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions also. You know, I understand why we need to proceed with this, and I'm well on the record about my opinion about some of these two companies in particular, so I won't go over all that again. But what is the total county match on this? Is it 6.25%?
The total county match would generally be 6.25%. I have a vague recollection of being told that on the debris cleanup, on the debris removal piece, we were essentially told that we wouldn't have a match, so I do need to go back into my files to look to see if I have that written somewhere. So, if, if in fact, we, that is for sure that we don't have a match on this, then it would be zero, but I need to check on that.
Thank you. This is a, this, because of Department of Labor ruling, debris removal is not subject to prevailing wage, therefore, we can't check payrolls and all that stuff to make sure that they're doing everything correctly on this project. What oversight do we have of Phillips and Jordan?
So, when this project was first initiated, I wasn't here yet, and so, I don't know what the.
Or us.
I know, so I don't know what the oversight at that point was, other than I believe there were multiple agent departments from the county involved, including Public Works and Environmental Health, and at one point, I believe there was an external contractor overseeing this contract. So, to that, to the extent of what happened in the past, I can't really answer to that, but what I can tell you is that going forward, we'll have a tighter rein on the oversight of this contract.
Who's responsible?
Who is responsible? Me.
Okay. Thank you. Where are we doing the, there's been information that I've been learning that, and this goes back to the fact that we can't check their payroll, because it's not a prevailing wage job, which I wouldn't agree with, but it is, Department of Labor makes that call. So, we can't check on this, but my understanding is that P&amp;J has not settled up their bills for the last tranche. Do you know anything about that?
I don't know anything about that, because I wasn't here then, but I can certainly do some due diligence and look into it.
Because I'd hate to be hiring, hiring them back on if they're going to stiff the local people, so you could find that out for us?
I can certainly try.
Where are they going to put their log deck? Are they going to stack these thousand logs?
You know, it's in the treatment plan that I neglected to bring with me, but I can certainly follow up with you on the location. Both those, like, the locations have been identified, as well as where they will be taking their, the slash and other debris.
Okay. And what efforts is Phillips and Jordan going to make in this time to conduct local hires? What outreach are they going to do? Are our hotels going to be filled up with gentlemen from Tennessee and Florida?
You know, I haven't spoken to them, because we don't have a notice to proceed yet on these projects, but when, when we do have that notice to proceed, it'll be part of the initial meeting.
So, we don't have a notice to proceed from FEMA?
Right, because the trees that are remaining are still in the environmental process. So, we have everything we need to do the cutting, we're just waiting for the environmental clearance.
So, does this delay the process of getting a tree fall, starting this process? If we don't have a proceed, we don't have a notice to proceed, can we delay the answer on this until you can answer these questions, or just forward? Or does that delay the project?
Well, it wouldn't necessarily delay the project, but if I were, if I were to get communication that we are clear as far as our environmental and cultural and archaeological issues are concerned on this project, then we could start going through the kickoff of the project.
So, when do we expect to hear the notice to proceed?
I was hoping to get it last month, and I haven't yet. So, it, you know, it's however long it takes for the National Historic Preservation Office and the State Historic Preservation Office, as long as it takes for all of this to go through all of those agencies, that's kind of how long it takes. So, I'm hoping by the spring.
Ma'am, happy to approve this, but I want to make sure these questions are answered.
Yep, I'm happy to follow back up with you when I've got better, better answers to the questions that are sort of forward-leaning, and then the ones looking backwards, I can, I can.
I don't have to wait till next quarter?
You don't have to wait till next quarter.
No, I'm just not going to let up on this. Okay. Other questions from the board? Public comment?
Alcigala, Taxpayer Association, good presentation. One of the things that taxpayers and the public are concerned with is not having fires like this. And it would be good for a detailed forensic, scientific examination of the fire to answer the questions, what could have been done to prevent or to reduce the damage done by this fire? Some of our fire experts say that the first attack on the fire, early suppression is critical, and if there's not sufficient early suppression, the consequences are tremendous, which they were. And so, I think the public would like to see a report done in a balanced way from a reputable source to come up with recommendations that will prevent a fire like this from happening again. Thank you.
Mike? How many public speakers do we have on this item? If you could raise your hand. Okay, you will be our last speaker.
Mr. Sogala, another fire is going to happen, like the Butte Fire.
Mike, you got to address the board.
Okay, I'm just.
I know, you know the rules.
First of all, I agree with Supervisor Garimendi. You go quarterly, you're giving them more rope. Okay, P&amp;J, Phillips and Jordan, is a disaster cleanup company, which is a burgeoning industry. Tetra Tech is part of that burgeoning industry. What do burgeoning industries do? They take advantage of the situations. Speaking from a personal point, I was a victim of the Butte Fire. Phillips and Jordan cleaned up my place. The disaster, the cleanup removal of burned materials was way, it was milt, okay? Cutting of the trees along the public right-of-way, I could guarantee you, if you had a local company, that they would have gone in and cleaned up my property in one eight-hour shift, the trees along the right-of-way. Phillips and Jordan took four days, with about three times as many individuals as they needed. Now, you're going, you're going to keep extending these people, they're going to come back and ask for it again. Tetra Tech, Phillips and Jordan, it's about time you look at, you know, we're paying for this, the taxpayers, everybody in this room. You're supposed to be watched after, sitting up there. Don't let these people keep coming back and asking for more money. They don't need it. They're not, they're not using the money they get the right way. They're an industry. Their industry is providing income for their stockholders, for their overhead, et cetera, et cetera. When they sign a contract, hold it to them. If they want to extend the timeframe, no problem. If you want to extend the dollars and cents, sorry, you signed a contract. They're, they're using the system, and right now, we're part of the system, and it's going to happen again in someone else's district, and then you'll be, you'll be questioning their motives, and you'll be calling for monthly questioning, not quarterly. Thank you.
Fire is part of my history, from the time I was a small girl. My dad did a lot of cat work, piling brush, got the fire guys to come over and watch them burn it, and it was to help prevent fires. When the Butte Fire started, I saw the pyroclastic cloud, and I was watching, and I saw two fires come up that were not natural. It was not from a spark, it was not from an ember, or whatever else. It was away from the pyroclastic cloud, and I was, I was down in, near Comanche, and I looked up the canyon, and I saw those two fires start after the pyroclastic cloud, and they were not natural. And if you have a fire, you can hit it as hard and as fast as you can, and you have somebody out there causing more fires, then you cannot possibly expect anyone to put it out. And that's what's going on in California, and it is beyond comprehension.
Thank you. So, no further public comment. Bring it back to the board. I would like to, I'm not going to make a motion on this, but, you know, frankly, I have a lot of questions, I want to know the cash flow questions that you guys put out, as well as I did. Doesn't sound like we'll have a big delay, maybe we push this back to the 26th, and then you could, we could put on the consents, we don't have to have a big discussion, but it gives us a chance to all feel comfortable. I don't know what the board thinks about that.
And that is my issue, is that we've had a number of modifications to this contract, and this cash flow thing has spiraled even sideways at times. So, I would like to see that, that complete accounting as part of bringing this agenda item back, so that we can see, here was the original contract, here were the original costs, here's some of the amendments to that contract, some of those changes, and how is the money flow fit within those contract obligations? Because we're going to have to pick up, or we're picking up the shortfall, even if we're borrowing money from ourselves, we're picking up the shortfall until the state or the, you know, somebody else reimburses us. And money right now, the interest rates, you're talking literally tens of thousands of dollars, given the wrong opportunity here, of money that we're just literally bleeding out because of the shortfall that we're having to pay internally. And I would like to know what those numbers are.
I'll agree to bring it back on the 26th.
So, wait for a minute, are we going to stop it?
Works for me.
Yes, I'm sorry, do we need a motion? Are we just going to postpone it till date certain? Is there a motion to move it to 26th?
Yeah, I would make the motion that we move this to 26th.
Motion made by Supervisor Tofanelli, is her second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Mills. All voted opposed, passes 5-0.
See on the 26th.
See on the 26th. And if we could get all these questions answered, I'm sure we could move it through on consent, not have to just. Ladies and gentlemen, it is 12:05, it is time for lunch.
We have one more item.
We have one more item that we'll take up after lunch.
After lunch? After lunch, okay.
So we'll, uh, we will reconvene here at exactly 1:30 in the afternoon. Thank you very much. We stand as though we're recessed.
I'm ready. You ready, Susan?
Yes.
Okay, we're ready, Jack.
Good afternoon, welcome back to the February 12th, 2019 Board Supervisors Meeting. We will begin with item 30.
Item 30 is from the Office of Emergency Services to authorize the board chair to execute the First Amendment to Professional Services Agreement between Calamari's County and Tetra Tech Incorporated for the recovery of homeowners' insurance revenues associated with the Cal recycle right-of-entry debris removal operations for an amount not to exceed $854,656.81 for the period of August 2nd, 2018 through June 30th, 2019.
Thank you. Uh, I had some questions on this. Do you want to speak to it first or you want to preempt or you want me to start asking?
You can go ahead and start asking.
All right, we'll start with the easy one. How did we end up not having this contract? We've been doing this work and I thought it was, frankly, I thought we were done with this. So once, tell us what's not done.
So um, this contract bounced around from environmental management to environmental how, no, to Public Works. Um, and then around the end of May last year, it bounced to me. And at that time, I was not clear on where everything was. When I realized that we needed to do an amendment to extend the term of the contract in order to do the closeout activities required for this project, um, I, we determined that there was actually no contract, Amendment One, to then do an Amendment Two. So this is Amendment One to the original contract to extend the term through uh, the end of this fiscal year.
Have we been being reimbursed by this federal government for this work?
Um, you know, I'm not sure about that. I haven't been submitting the claims out of my office for this.
Where the crew's been submitting the claims?
Uh, that auditor's office has.
Can you tell me where the more than $6 million we've collected from insurance is currently at?
Uh, it's in an, in an account locally. Um, I don't know what, where, under what OR key or any of that. Rebecca would have to answer that question.
Any idea when the state of California is, or federal government's going to come asking for their money?
Uh, anecdotally, it has to do with how they process the information on their end, uh, when they're going to ask for the money. We've asked on a couple of occasions when they would, where can we write the check to? Um, but they've told us to hold the money until they ask for the money. So I don't know when that is going to be.
Good to know. Nice revolving fund. Um, we've got a, in this item, it says we negotiated a schedule with the contractor. Uh, I, the schedule wasn't in the pack. Can you tell me where we are with that?
Sure. So the initial uh, contract did include a schedule. I, I neglected to make copies for, for the whole board, but this is the schedule that was originally negotiated.
In the original contract.
In the original contract, um, which was a draft six-month schedule for key project tasks, um, where it was prior to me coming on board and then taking ownership of this contract. I, I don't know what, what all was completed and what schedule, what was on schedule and what was off schedule. I just know that when I took over the contract, we were at a point where we needed to start doing closeout activities to wrap it up.
I, I agree. Um, when can I get see a schedule that's going to show us how we're going to wrap this up? Assuming, because I thought it was wrapped, so now I think I need to see it in writing that it is wrapped?
Sure. So um, as soon as the board approves or disapproves of this contract, we can go through, I can contact Tetra Tech and have them put together uh, the closeout schedule for this and then what it, what it's going to cost.
I would, I would imagine Tetra Tech is going to try to get to the exact amount, down to the 81 cents before they're done. Um, I would really like to see the schedule and how we're going to close this program off before I would certainly support this activity. Is this something that would delay anything significantly if we push it back to the next regular scheduled board meeting?
Nope.
Okay. So we can, we have a little bit of time to get this thing right. Because I was, I was quite surprised when I found out that this is the zombie project and won't go away. I think a lot of people on this, guys know how much I love this project.
I know.
Nothing like asking people who've lost their house to cough up money three and a half years later.
Right, right.
Uh, we should probably, somebody should probably ask what the statute of limitations are on this as well, because we're probably getting, and they may not be germane and just, just skip that one. I don't think we want to ask. Those are my questions. Are there, are there questions from the board?
Yes, I do.
Supervisor Mills?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm really curious about Object Code 5272 is, what funds have been appropriated in that object code? Whether we are fully appropriated for the $844,656 or is it just a portion thereof? And, and how much money has been spent out to date? I think that follows along with his questions.
Sure.
As to just how far they've gone. Because I'd like to know, here's the contract that started in what year? Twenty-sixth? Yeah. And, and we're still here. And, and in reality, I'd like to know what has been the billing schedule and our payment schedule for, for the various pieces of the operation and what percentage of completion? Because the contract never spelled out in contracts, and I'm sure Gary's familiar with this, is percentage of completion equals percentage of payment.
That's right.
And yet, that never happened in this contract. So they, that's how they're getting their room to move the way they're moving right now. So um, I'd also like to see an end date and that this board set an end date. We, we drew out the line in sand and said, look, everything has to be in, done and finished by this date. And we're not going to drag this till June 31st or June 30th. Uh, we're going to, we're going to stop it right here. And y'all better bring in your paperwork and present it so we can get you billed out.
But part of the closeout activities is them transferring all of the data to us locally. Uh, because right now, if you were to ask me something specific about any of these operations, I, I don't have the information. I'd have to go to them to try and get the information out of them, so.
But we own that data.
We own the data, which is why.
They should transfer to us when we want it.
Right, right.
Exactly. That's it. That's a scary prospect, knowing that they have that data. It's our data and it's, I feel like it's almost being held hostage in this situation. So, and it's no reflection on you, Michelle.
No, no.
This is, you were.
This is another, you know, fun piece that I've been trying to sort out and clean up and, and move on from, so.
But that $6 million is, has me extremely disturbed as well. Um, I think we need, we need to have that accounting.
I think we're happy to keep it, but I think they're going to come asking for it.
Right. They will come asking for it.
Right.
Supervisor Tufanella?
Well, my comments were the same as Dennis's. We own, we own that data. We paid for it. That's what this is for. And so, um, and, and he is absolutely correct. Every billing that they sent to us should have had a percent, percentage. Where are we indicating, you know, we're at 90%, we're at 98% or what have you. We, we need this accounting. I'd like to have it come back next, our next board meeting too, with all this pertinent information. Um, so we can look at it and see exactly where it's at. Because I, I was under the impression too, that it was done. It was over.
We thanked Sonny and Sonoma as well.
Yeah.
Right.
So um, we'll have some public comment and we'll see if we want to. So you have a public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion of a motion.
Sorry. I would like to make a motion that we move this to the next available board meeting date to receive a full summary and accounting of the, of the program and that uh, we then also will make a decision at that point as to what our end date will be.
I would second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Mills and a second by Supervisor Tufanella. Let him click you.
My question is, um, when you say the next available meeting date, do you mean?
Twenty-sixth.
The twenty-sixth? Okay, thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second for the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five oh. See on the 26th. All right, we're at the regular agenda. Excuse me, we're on the second item, number 37.
Item 37 is from Public Works to accept contract work for the installation of the Blagan Road Temporary Bridge and authorize the board chair to sign associated notice of completion.
Morning Chair, good afternoon Chair and members of the board. My name is Joshua Pack. I'm your Director of Public Works and Transportation. Uh, please apologize me for, apologize for sitting down. I have three items. I figured I'd make myself comfortable. So this one that we're bringing here, item 37, is a request for notice of completion for the Blagan Road Temporary Bridge Project with an emphasis on temporary. So the previous work on this project was done in 2017 as a response to the winter storms. Uh, it included a temporary bridge, approach roadways and walkways on Blagan Road. Uh, that contract, a lot of the work was done on October 30th, 2017. However, over the next seven to nine months, um, we had some issues of several change orders, a couple outstanding items in the field that needed to be reconciled. Uh, the final amount of that work was done uh, in late summer 2018 for a total cost of about $2,000, $204,000. Now, um, that work's completed. Um, we could have come to you a, a couple of months ago with a notice of completion. Uh, my concern in doing that before we had the permanent solution and the just, the, um, the contract for that, that there would be confusion with the public that by approving this, this temporary bridge, that there would be some confusion that this was a permanent project and permanent fix, which it's not. Uh, and the subsequent items to this, we'll be talking about the next steps in that particular project. Uh, however, this will close out this particular phase of the project. This is an important part of the FEMA reimbursement process, so that's why we're here today. And with that, we're recommending approval of the notice of completion. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have about this particular item.
Do you believe there'll be a problem getting any FEMA reimbursement this far down the road on this project?
I, Supervisor Calaway, I don't. Um, I don't foresee anything. This is a project we've been vetting with them over time. It's not like we're going to pop an invoice on them that they're not expecting. We've talked about this option with them. So I don't see any issues with, with the reimbursement with that. So, um, so I, I don't, not at this stage.
So after we do the next item, which is the permanent, then this bridge is the county's bridge? We own that?
Yeah, and I, and I can talk, and I'll talk a little bit about that in the subsequent project.
Okay, that's fine.
But um, you know, it is, it is, uh, one of the options we'll be looking at is, is um, is how that option of keeping the bridge in place with improvements weighs to other potential permanent options. And so, um, you know, our idea.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Back up?
Back up.
So, so um, you know, it, there is access right now. Um, our, our proposal is to look at different options to do that permanently. Does that include improving the bridge? What is likely, um, is that the bridge will be removed and used for other purposes. So the, the bridge is a, is a lease right now. So we're in the process of leasing it. That was set up um, a little over a year and a half ago. Um, when that lease is over, we have the option to purchase the bridge for $1. And if we do make that purchase, uh, we would have that bridge. If we don't use that bridge um, for Blagan, that bridge can be reused as a temporary bridge for other locations.
Okay, but you're not, maybe that should go with the next item, but you're not looking at one of the options being just keeping what's there, there and that be permanent?
Yeah, I'll talk, I think the next item's probably more appropriate unless the board would like more information. Uh, it is about the permanent project. So I'm, I'll, I'll be sure to touch on that as part of the subsequent uh, uh, report.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions from the board? You're right enough.
Just to continue the conversation about the bridge. Many counties have bridges, uh, portable bridges or expandable bridges that are in their inventory. And I think one county has seven. Uh, so uh, we have none until, and so the decision to purchase this bridge might be a, a good move in the long term simply because of the number of bridges we have and the vulnerability. I'm thinking about Dogtown Road, for instance. And there's two bridge locations there that even temporarily, there are still wood, wood decks on those bridges. It wouldn't take much to take them out. So having this bridge in our inventory to me would be a very, very wise move.
I, I don't disagree. Uh, I will say in my previous jurisdiction, I had one temporary bridge, a Bailey Bridge, 1940s, World War II construction. Um, we had it for 32 years and never used it. But it's one of those things that sometimes it's better to have and not use than not have it and need it. So uh, your point is very well taken.
So did you want to give us a dollar?
I'll be glad to.
We're soliciting 20 cent donations from each of them.
When we get to the next item, I, I suggest that we store it at your house, Marita.
The point being is, is that, that bridge also could be leased to another county or another jurisdiction if necessary, if we find that they have a pressing need. If we had it available, just one more piece of the puzzle.
I agree.
Very expensive. Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, public comment? Supervisor Calaway?
I move this item.
Let me do public comment real quick. Public comment? Seeing no public comment, uh, I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Calaway?
I move this item.
I'll second.
Moved by Supervisor Calaway, second by Supervisor Tufanella. Further discussion? All in failure?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0.
Item 38 is from Public Works to award the RFP 18094022925 for the Blagan Road Disaster Recovery Project Delivery Services to Mark Thomas and authorize the board chair to execute a professional services agreement with Mark Thomas in an amount not to exceed $198,167 for the Blagan Road Project, PW00130, for the period of February 13th, 2019 through December 31st, 2020.
Josh?
Good afternoon, Chair and the board. Uh, Joshua Pack, again, your Director of Public Works. Uh, so this is related to the permanent repairs to Blagan Road. Um, as the board remarked earlier this morning, we did do a, uh, I did do a summary on this and other projects. This is one of the FEMA projects that we've identified, one of the five FEMA projects. So shortly upon my arrival as, as your new director, um, Public Works went out for a call for project or a call for consultant services for this, um, for all five projects simultaneously. Unfortunately, Blagan and Murphy's, we received qualified bids for three of those, but Blagan and Murphy's, we didn't receive qualified proposals. So we went back to the drawing board. We reached out to our consultant community, figure out what we could do to make this um, uh, more attractive to the consultant community. Um, we went back out through another uh, call for projects. The feedback we got was positive that it was the time of the year that was, that was, um, and the timeframe was, it was difficult for them to put qualified proposals. Uh, but we did go back, we re, uh, we repackaged it, reissued it. Um, we opened those in, in January 2019. That work includes everything from uh, project design, environmental permitting, right-of-way, utility relocation, uh, bid support, construction support, basically from cradle to grave. Um, this will help restore the facilities to their prior conditions and also helps fund some of the additional hazardous mitigation that may be necessary to lesser the, the potential for future loss of infrastructure. Now, we did receive four proposals as part of this project. Uh, we had a team review those proposals and as a result of that, Mark Thomas and Company was determined to be the most qualified, responsive and responsible to perform all the work in amount not to exceed $198,000. Now, funding for this project is budgeted through the 2017 winter storm budget. The County General Fund is responsible for 6.2, 6.25% of that. Um, speaking of Mark Thomas, they're highly qualified. They've done a lot of this work in the pro, uh, past. They've worked for the county before. Um, I've worked professionally with them for nearly two decades, both as a, as a, a public sector employee and as a sub consultant, uh, when I worked in the consultant field. So a lot of experience with them. They're very well qualified. Uh, part of the process, as we alluded to briefly, is early public outreach and alternatives analysis. So we need to early and quickly um, establish qualified and preferred alternatives at this location. Um, that will go out to the public as part of a public meeting and solicit feedback on those alternatives before determining a, a preferred alternative. Now, the approach with this bridge like we will, or this location like we will with, with Murphy's and the others, is to find a context-sensitive solution that meets the needs quickly, efficiently, at as low a cost as possible, with minimal risk to the county and to the public. So we'll be working on that goal. Uh, the ultimate goal is to deliver the project in 2019. Um, and as that, as such, we are recommending approval of the project. And the last thing regarding the existing bridge, due to sheer, it needs to remain an option, even if it's a poor option. Um, we need to have the options on the table before, uh, when we present to the public. It's likely that that alternative may come off the table, but as. but as part of our analysis, there is access there right now, we do need to include that in the gamut of options that we present to the public. But, like I said, it's likely an alternative that won't have much traction, but we'll know more about that when we do the analysis and actually present to the public. With that said, I have nothing else left to report, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Supervisor Callaway?
Yeah. As I read it, the contract with Mr. Thomas is between, is from tomorrow to end of December two thousand twenty, but we wanna have the project completed in two thousand nineteen.
Yes.
So, why, is it because he'll be consulting on the construction of it, because he's doing the design?
Yeah, and Mark Thomas is about two thousand employees, it's a large conglomerate, it's offices in Sacramento, but Supervisor Callaway, yeah, the goal, as I mentioned, my goal is to push things until I can no longer push, and with the eye that there are certain things that are out of my, you know, that are out of our control, in particular, federal regulatory agencies, things like the Army Corps of Engineers and Department of Fish and Wildlife, we're selecting alternatives that have the least exposure to that, but, you know, through my prior experience, even though I have considerable experience moving through that process, there is the possibility for that to occur. In addition, even with a project that's completed, there is closeout, et cetera, that may leak into two thousand twenty, even if we deliver the project in two thousand nineteen, having someone cover that kind of worst-case scenario, we could certainly amend that if necessary, but when I do contracts, usually I kinda cover the longest potential, within reason, I don't go out to two thousand twenty-two or two thousand twenty-three, but it minimizes the need for me to have to come back to you to do a contract amendment at a later date, so we could certainly amend that if there's concerns, and then if we go past that date, we can amend the date later on, but that's the reason that date's shown, December, is just in the off chance, or the chance that we hit snags that we aren't expecting, and if this project does extend in two thousand twenty, I don't have to come back to you with a contract amendment. And I will be providing regular reports, as you're already well familiar with, on the status of this and as we move forward, and like I said, my goal is to push, 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 and then push a little more until it is physically impossible to make the, to make the two thousand nineteen schedule.
Okay, so my push to you is at what point do you expect Mark Thomas at all to be back with something that we can go out to bid for?
So, Supervisor Callaway, part of that will depend on the public outreach and the public meeting, my hope is to have a, some sort of public workshop up in the, in the Murphy's, in that area, so the public can see that, provide feedback, that would probably occur in the first couple of months. Ideally, we would have something set this summer and be in construction sometime mid to late summer. We do have a window, once you hit October fifteenth, a lot of the permitting agencies don't allow you to be in creeks and waterways, so there is kind of a hard limit there, so this isn't a, especially in that elevation, that's not a project we can be doing in January and February, but that drop-dead date will be in the later part of the summer, but, like I said, my goal is to have this to you, the Board, and this will come to the Board as part of a approval to solicit bids, that'll come to you ideally sometime in early to midsummer.
Okay, thank you.
Questions from the Board? Public comment? Seeing none, bring it back to the Board.
I'll move this item, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Supervisor Callaway, is her second?
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Tuffinelli. Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero.
Item thirty-nine is from Public Works to award RFP one eight zero nine four zero two one nine two five for the Murphy's Drive Disaster Recovery Project Delivery Services to Dawkins Engineering and authorize the Board Chair to execute a professional services agreement with Dawkins Engineering in an amount not to exceed two hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars for the Murphy's Drive Project, PW zero zero four eight nine, for the period of February thirteenth, two thousand nineteen through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty.
Good afternoon Chair and members of the Board, again, Joshua Pack, your Director of Public Works, this is similar to the previous one, so I'll hit more of the items that are, it has a similar timeframe and structure to Blagian, however, there are a few differences that I'll bring to your attention. So, similar to Blagian, we did issue a request for proposals to solicit qualified bids, we did not get feedback on that or didn't receive any qualified bidders, we went back out to bid, we did get four bidders, and I neglected to mention that in my previous, we did get four qualified bids for both, or responses for both the previous project and this. Upon careful review, Dawkins was identified to be the most qualified, responsive, and responsible to perform the work for an amount not to exceed two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. There is some differences between this and Blagian, one of the things that I do wanna highlight, where this number's a fair bit higher than the previous one, is there are some concerns with environmental and some geotech things that may cause considerable more effort than Blagian, even though the projects are somewhat similar and somewhat geographically close, there are concerns. So, the goal behind this is to come in considerably less than that, but this does include if worst-case scenario occurs, that we have all the regulatory agencies that are engaging in this happen, that I'm hoping to avoid with a thoughtful, with thoughtful approach. But with that said, I do wanna provide that caveat, that that is the goal on that, and the goal for the other one too, is if we're able to streamline this process, the goal is to come in considerably less. With that said, again, this is also funded through the two thousand seventeen winter storm budget, six and a quarter percent is funded by the County General Fund, the remaining is through FEMA and other reimbursables. Dawkins is extremely well-qualified, again, I've worked with them on a number of projects, similar projects to this, they've outperformed our expectations. Again, similar to what I mentioned on Blagian, this one requires extensive and early public outreach, and I do wanna highlight, there is a notable difference between Blagian and this. Blagian, while the bridge is not popular, there is limited access to the site, Murphy's, the site of the road is gone, and so there are concerns with secondary access, there are concerns with emergency ingress and egress, you know, between the two, whether if Blagian gets done first, we can look at an opportunity to reuse that bridge at this site, or if, you know, this one between the two, and it's not, is to, this one, I think there's a greater need between the two, but not that both don't need great needs, just that this one does provide some emergency egress and egress in case of fires or other concerns, and the public has been vocal on that. I do wanna reiterate and strongly empathize with these concerns, it's been, it's been two years now without secondary access, and I am fully committed to getting this done as quickly as possible. As I mentioned, the goal is to deliver later this year, a lot of the same struggles that may occur, and again, my thing is to push until I can't push anymore, you're gonna hear that way too much from me, but we are gonna do that. To that end, both this project and the project after, we've already scheduled project kickoff meetings for tomorrow and Thursday in anticipation of your approval, so that's just, instead of waiting, that's just a sign of, we get these schedules, so we start the day after the contract's executed. So, the consultants know how to expedite projects, Dawkins in particular has expedited projects for me in the past, have done so very successfully, and so very confident in their abilities and our abilities to get this done as soon as possible. And with that said, I would recommend approval of this contract, and I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Again, it's really a primary ingress egress, not a secondary ingress egress for people in Unit fifteen, as I keep getting reminded. And I guess I should've asked on the same, the monies quoted are really just for the design documents and so forth, not for the construction?
That's correct, not for the construction, and part of that is also with the FEMA numbers, and Michelle talked to that a little bit in one of her slides about the number there and working with FEMA to get those adjusted, the FEMA numbers we're working with are the numbers on the original estimates, and so we can't revise those numbers with FEMA, FEMA's amenable to making those changes, as long as the changes represent forekind or equal replacement, you can't take a river crossing and build a five-hundred-foot bridge and ask FEMA to pay for that, but FEMA will reimburse you for like replacement, and they realize that sometimes your early estimates may change as you get into the project, so part of this process, the early process, is once we determine an alternative, reach out with FEMA with the new cost numbers and get those numbers amended, so they better reflect the original cost. So, it's likely that the actual project costs are gonna go up, I don't know what those numbers are until I know what an alternative is, but we'll be working with FEMA as quickly as soon as we have those numbers, that's part of the process to get this constructed.
And the construction costs, the county will also be responsible for six point two five percent?
That's correct, as far as I'm aware, it's six and a quarter percent, it's similar to the design as well.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Tuffinelli?
Yeah, I'm, the Murphy's Drive Bridge and the Blagian Bridge, what we're looking at is replacing the bridges that got destroyed, Murphy's was washed out in storm damage. So, I'm taking it because there's a road on either side of it, that we're gonna replace the bridges where the old ones were, or as close as we can.
Yeah.
So, I'm looking at the scope here and is calling for a right-of-way acquisition. Why is that in the scope?
That is a great and very astute point, and first of all, let me emphasize that what's not there currently, previously it was there, wasn't bridges, it was culverts.
It was culvert, it was culvert, it wasn't an acreage.
Yeah, and there's a little, you know, a little bit of, and so, one of the things with the federal government when you do these sort of projects, in particular after they've kinda ripened a little bit, is the fed strings that come with it, or the money that comes with it, and depending on projects, they want you to perfect the right-of-way, and so, part of the project especially is we start looking at the potential impacts of upstream and downstream, if there are anything that we have to fix as part of this, those may likely involve right-of-way acquisition. Other projects, even if we own the road, and I won't get into long details on prescriptive right-of-way, but a lot of our older roads in the county, we don't own the underlying rights to the actual road, and so the federal government has concerns that if we don't perfect that right-of-way, and as a result, some part of the public could come in and claim property ownership, so the feds want you to, again, this is why, when you have emergencies, you gotta fix them with emergencies, 'cause you have to go along the, when you're this far along, you have to go along their process. And so, the right-of-way as part of that is for that, is for the potential that the feds may say you need to perfect the right-of-way and purchase the underlying rights to that road. So my hope is that the right-of-way is minimal and almost nonexistent, but I won't know that until I actually get into the final design of the culvert or bridge or whatever it is, we see the extent of that, and so again, this is where, you know, the maximum not to exceed, it's likely it will come in significantly lower than that, but we need to plan for all contingencies, otherwise, I'll come to you with three change orders and delaying the project for every little contingency that occurs, so that's why you see that number is higher than I like to see, but again, I think through some craft, some thoughtful and intelligent planning, we can get that number way down.
Thank you, and you guys had this conversation on even roads, getting federal money or state money, trying to pave something if we don't own the rights underneath it, so, yeah, I just wanted to bring that out, why that's in there, so, thank you.
Yeah, and it's a good point, it's something that we struggle with, and it's sometimes where federal money or, you know, grant money isn't necessarily free, there's strings that come with it, and we have to, when we're considering this grant money, we have to think about those strings and if they're worth it to, or hoops, and if it's worth it to jump through those hoops for the carrot at the end of the, at the end of the stick.
Thank you, John.
Anything else from the Board? Public comment? Public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Board, is there a motion or further discussion?
I'd like to move this item.
Can you turn your mic on, Supervisor Callaway? What was that, I didn't hear you?
I had a spitball. I'd like to move-
Make some noise.
I'd like to move this item, please.
I would second this for you.
Thank you Supervisor Tuffinelli.
Motion by Supervisor Callaway, second by Supervisor Tuffinelli, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
Keep pushing. Item forty.
Item forty is from the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors to assign members of the Board of Supervisors as the representative and the alternate for the Calaveras Workforce Development Initiative Group for two thousand nineteen. This is a group that Supervisor Olivera was heavily involved with last year, the group has requested that the Board consider making another appointment and an alternate to this group, it's the one that is developing, well, they're working with the local high schools to develop vocational training programs, and so they're looking for someone to be assigned and someone to be an alternate.
I recommend Supervisor Tuffinelli.
All right. One second, huh?
Well then, the alternate would be Callaway, so that way I can always say, Marita, I'm busy.
Well, I'll tell you what, because of your experience in vocational and trades, I think you'd make a good representative.
I'll accept it. If you have the, if you have the motion, you can second.
No, no, Mr. Stopper wants to be.
Good?
Yeah.
Great, it's a good group.
It fits in with my fellow job training and also the economic development groups, no, this is very much something I'm interested in, so I'll definitely back you up.
Great, so-
I think he's a great choice, his background and his work and things he's done.
I think it'd be great. Further comments from the Board? Public comment? Bringing it back, seeing none, bring it back to the Board, is there a motion?
I'll move the item.
Supervisor Mills is moving the item.
I'll second.
Supervisor Callaway is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. It's a really good, it's a good program. Item forty-one, am I given to fact?
Considering it's my item, yeah. Okay, so, item forty-one is from the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, the appointment of applicants to serve on various committees, commissions, advisory boards, and county service areas. So this is the next, the next round, our initial round of appointments was at the January eighth meeting, what you have before you is quite a few applications, so what I propose is that I go through them, read them off for you, and then if there's any that you would like to pull off to act upon separately, that we do so after we've completed the list, how's that sound?
So, Madam Clerk, if there's a choice between two, you want us to call it out during this process or afterward?
You can, or I can, you can call it out during the list. Okay, so the first is for the Area Twelve Agency on Aging Advisory Council, an application was received from Phil Sherwood, who was an incumbent for a vacancy expiring twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-one, he is the only application for this position. The next is for the Comanche Regional Park Advisory Board, one vacancy for a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty twenty for a member-at-large from Calaveras County, an application has been received from Robert Van Bibber, who was currently serving as the incumbent. The next, Children and Families Commission, first five, there are two vacancies, one is for a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-one, local school district representative, and an application has been received from Mike Chmenty as the incumbent. The next is a vacancy for a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-one for a Health and Human Services Agency alternate, and an application was received from Laura Larson, who is the incumbent. The next is for County Service Area One, Rancho Calaveras Road Advisory Committee, one vacancy for a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-two, and application was received from Kevin Ost, who is serving as an incumbent. The next, County Service Area Twelve, Golden Hills Road Advisory Committee, two vacancies, one for a term expiring twenty twenty-two, and the application was received from Mark Godabout, who is an incumbent, and the other is for another term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-two, Ken Oliver has applied and he is the incumbent. The next is for the Fish and Game Commission, we have one vacancy for a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty twenty for a District Two representative, we have two applications, one from Mary Ann Guaramendi, the second from Karen Waldier, who is the incumbent.
I will disclose that Mary Ann Guaramendi is my aunt, I think most of you know her, and I would choose her for the Board.
Go ahead.
I would choose her for the Board, I do not believe there's a conflict or any reason to recuse myself.
Did you want an alternate?
There is no alternates for that group. Okay, so moving along, the Hardwood Advisory Committee, we have one vacancy for a term- Okay, so moving along, the Hardwood Advisory Committee. We have one vacancy for a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-two for a Farm Bureau Representative. An application was received from Tim Follendorf, who is the incumbent. The next is for a vacancy for a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-two for a Master Gardener Representative. An application has been received from Debbie Powell, who is the incumbent. The next is a vacancy for a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-two for a Registered Forester, and an application was received from Tim Tate, who is the incumbent. The next is a vacancy for a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-two for a General Public Member, and an application was received from Will Moore. The next is for the IHSS Advisory Committee. One vacancy for a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty twenty for a General Public Representative. We have two applications, one from William Gonzalez, and one from Jennifer Priest, who is the incumbent.
I'd like to see Ms. Priest stay on.
That's fine.
Okay. The next is one vacancy for a term expiring twelve thirty-one two thousand nineteen for a past or present consumer. We have an application from Jeremy J.J. Benoit. The next is for the Law Library Board of Trustees. One vacancy for a term expiring twelve thirty-one two thousand nineteen for an attorney or a general public member. We have an application from Stephen Salente, who is the incumbent. The Library Commission has one vacancy for a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-two, and an application was received from Celeste Bordner, who is the incumbent. The Mental Health Board has four vacancies, all expiring twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-one, and they are for consumers, um, or family members. We have applications from Aaron Marley, incumbent, Bill Sidorovich, incumbent, Rita Maxwell, incumbent, and Dawn Chason, incumbent. So four applications for four vacancies. The last is for the Public Educational and Governmental, or PEG, Television Commission. We have one vacancy for a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty twenty for a District Three Representative, and an application from Pamela Quile, who is the incumbent. We have one vacancy for a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-two for a Representative of the Calaveras County Office of Education. We have an application from Scott Nannick, who is the incumbent. And we have one vacancy for a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-two for a Representative of the County Administrative Office, and an application was received from Krista Von Latta.
Discussion, both from board. Well, there was previous concern about Ms. Von Latta. I remember being polled. Has it been resolved?
Man pulled it.
There you go, Ken.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Mills, was it the concern about the availability? No, we had a, a discussion regarding that, and she is available to attend and participate.
The questions, Supervisor Stoppa. Supervisor Tuffinelli? Supervisor Calaway? Supervisor Misses Gilman? Public comment? Bonnie?
Uh, good afternoon. I'd just like to address some missed or wasted opportunities that you all have let go by. Um, I think it's important to advertise and announce the vacancies. It might help recruit new membership. Each time this is done, maybe the public needs to know how many slots are available so that they could, um, volunteer. And it would also help to maybe give a description of the program and, or the organization, and maybe an explanation of the duties of these committees, to try, you, help you recruit from your districts, or just have the, um, the public feel the, uh, the need to step up and fill those vacancies. So, that would just be my suggestion to help, because I know there's a lot of vacancies on a lot of committees, and if the community doesn't know what they're about, or how many vacancies there are, you know, you're not going to get that many people stepping up. And also, when people do their presentations, um, I, I heard that we were not going to be doing public presentations. They were going to be done by a, a piece of paper. And I think people that step up, the volunteers, need to be recognized for the commitment and the time that's involved, and that would be another suggestion I'd like to make to all of you. Thank you.
Well?
Uh-oh. Slow quick before we get there.
I'm Will Moore from Rancho Calaveras, and, uh, I want to thank the board for considering my application for this Hardwood Advisory Committee. I think I've jumped the gun here a little bit, but, uh, anyhow, I grew up in Hardwood, Michigan, and, uh, the woods was the main economy around there, so I sort of have an interest in this. Uh... I don't know exactly what the Hardwood Advisory Committee is or does. I think it's a committee with, uh, no money and no power, but, uh, presumably, its purpose is to advise the Board of Supervisors on matters related to the woods. And, uh, two things, I'm concerned, two things. Uh, one is this whole, uh, blue oak forest is, is under threat of extinction. Uh, another is it's a potential, uh, resource for economic reasons. Uh, there's a, uh, blue oak forest running from the Tehachapi Mountains all the way up to the Oregon border, and I'm sure, uh, you've all driven through many miles of it. I don't know how many have noticed that it's all mature trees. There's thousands and thousands of acres of blue oaks out there, where there's no young ones. And, uh, the reason for that is mainly fire suppression and cattle. Uh, these oaks have been evolving with, uh, fire for millions of years. I mean, fire was a part of their ecosystem, and if there's no fire, they stop producing acorns. And the Indians used to set the woods on fire to start the acorns. Plus, if, if there's no fire to burn the grass off, the acorns never reach the ground, so they never sprout. If the cattle eat the grass, the acorns sprout, but they eat seedlings. So now, if you've been driving around here, you see these dramatic oaks growing well out of a solid rock. Well, that's because that acorn fell in a rock pile and the cattle didn't get it. So it's, you know, kind of dramatic, seemingly. Anyhow, uh, what I've noticed, well, you know, if you look at that oak up there, you can see that there's a double canopy. There's an outer canopy, and there's a lot of small branches inside. Well, you could cut tons of firewood out of that oak without cutting down the tree. In a short, very short period of time, it would replenish itself. So that's, that's a possibility of harvesting some wood out of this forest without destroying the forest. Plus, you know, if there are people out there that.
Thank you very much, Will.
Shut up. This time. Thank you. Thank you, Will.
Would you like me to answer the questions from Ms. Newman?
Let me see if there's any further public comments. Is there any further public comment?
I like a lot of the things that this man said about the fire helping the oaks and the cows not helping the oaks. And one thing that really saddens me is along the road right-ofways, they are clearing so well that what used to be habitat for a lot of different, uh, birds and animals are not there anymore, and it's getting worse every year. And, um, it's really sad, because I like cows and I like to eat meat, but I also like to see nature. And, um, there doesn't seem to be, uh, a lot, they're not allowing nature to, uh, happen when they cut down all the trees along the right-ofways. And I know that there's a lot of issues with that, but this is one side of it. Thank you.
Is there other public comment after Tom? This is about the appointments, uh, process.
Yeah, I know. Um, to echo a little bit of what Bonnie said about it, I agree that, um, the outreach process is a bit weak, um, that only a, a handful of people who are local Calaveras policy wonks even notice or find the, uh, availa- the availability of committees to serve on. And also, Bonnie touched on, we're not given very clear understanding of our functions on some of the committees, and how much opportunity there is to, for anything to be accomplished through those. And also, what she said, that's, this is my, I agree with Bonnie speech, I guess, um, to be able to present their findings in public, so that the public, like here, so that other members of the public can hear what they've found and what our shortcomings are, and that members of the public could also, they'll be more aware of the committees that way, they'll be more aware of the work they do, and we'll be able to better gauge how much action the board takes based on the recommendations of the people on these committees, which would motivate people to want to do them. Because I look at some of the committee appointment, you know, positions available, and have to ask myself, how, how good a use of my time is that? How much is this really going to accomplish? How much are you going to listen to us? How much are you going to act on it? We have no real, it's hard to gauge, because we don't see necessarily what they present versus how you act on it, and that's my comment. Thank you.
We'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. Excuse me. Last one. How about? I should have stood back there. Uh, Cal, uh, House of County Taxpayer Association. I agree with Bonnie, and also the last speaker. Uh, it makes sense. Uh, maybe have a webpage on the county website that gives information about the committee, all the committees, and then when positions become available, put it in the paper. It might not have different results, but you couldn't be accused of not having open government. Thank you. That will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Madam Clerk, you had some.
Thank you. So I just wanted to, uh, follow up on some of the questions and the comments that were made. Um, we have approximately, um, somewhere between three and four hundred volunteers on the various boards, committees, commissions, um, that are appointed by the Board of Supervisors. Um, we are required by law to do, um, an annual notice of vacancy and to post it at the library. That is what we do. Um, there's usually about a hundred and fifty or more, um, vacancies. On that list, we provide, um, in addition to the list of vacancies, it does include, um, a description of the group and, um, what the positions are. Throughout the year, when the board makes, um, appointments to these groups, I update the list, and I post it right outside these board chamber doors, where everybody walks by, um, posted in the lobby of my building. And, um, there is a webpage that has all of that information on it, and, um, that is updated as soon as appointments are made. Um, so there is, uh, we only run a vacancy, um, a notice of vacancy in the newspaper when a vacancy occurs midterm. So something that was not included in an annual list, um, is included in the newspaper. We're required by law to do that, and we do that as well. The last is, as far as the annual reports, in the last year, uh, the board asked me to do a review of all of the committees and commissions, which I have been, um, systematically going through. We have just a few left that, um, uh, to be presented to you. And we have asked these groups to provide an annual report no later than October of each calendar year. To date, we have received, I think, three. So, um, the, the purpose of the annual report was to find a way for these groups to actually advise the board on the things they're supposed to be advising about. Um, if there was a need for an additional presentation or something like that, staff is always willing to work with these groups. Each group has a staff contact that is not necessarily the clerk of the board, um, but that is something that could be worked through as well. So, um, I think that covers all of the questions.
Thank you very much. Further board comments? Should we try to stop her?
Well, we would be honored to have you on the Hardwood Advisory Committee if it was only up to me. We'll let the rest of them decide.
Supervisor Mills, your lights on?
It's okay.
Okay. So, have we gone through the list? Do we have a motion?
I'll move, we accept as proposed.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Supervisor Stoppa, seconded by Supervisor Tuffinelli. Is there any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, passes five zero.
Supervisor announcements. In compliance with AB 1234, Chapter Disgovernment Code, Section 53232 dot 3D, board members shall provide brief reports on meetings they attended at the expense of the local agency at the next regular meeting of the legislative body. This report is required to include meetings attended for which there has been expense reimbursement, such as mileage, meals, lodging, et cetera, but may also, at the board member's discretion, include any other meeting attended by the supervisor on behalf of the county.
Supervisor Tuffinelli, would you like to start?
Well, as we always say, um, I didn't spend any money, county's money, because we don't have a budget for it, but, um, since our last meeting, um, I attended a, a Central Sierra Child Protection Agency meeting on the twenty-eighth. Um, that evening, I also attended a LAFCO meeting. Um, I met with Josh, um, from Public Works, um, concerning the CIP projects in District One. On the thirty-first, um, I attended a COG meeting on the sixth, um, and attended on the seventh, um, Mountain Valley MS, um, RFP Planning, uh, meeting with Supervisor Mills, um, that's concerning the RFP going out for ambulance service, um, for, in 2020. Um, it was a very good meeting. We had a consultant there. We went over all of our concerns, uh, what we thought were the benefits of what we are receiving now versus some of the downfalls that we've seen and, and had from public comments on it. Um, that committee, or the, that consultant, was being, um, taken around to different departments in the county, and meeting with those departments to discuss some of those, uh, their ideas on how it's working, along with the ambulance provider that, um, we have right now, which is American Legion Post 108. Um, and, uh, they'll be putting together that RFP here in the next several months, and, um, I'll be reporting out as we start getting bits and pieces on that RFP, and then finding when we have it all together, um, I will be, uh, reporting out along with Supervisor Mills on that. He's on that committee also. Um, I have, um, a Mountain Valley EMS board meeting on the nu- on the thirteenth at nine AM. Um, I have a meeting with, um, Jonathan Mitchell. Marina will know who Jonathan is, former Public Works engineer. Um, haven't seen him for a long time. He left back in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, back in that area. Um, he called, hadn't seen him since, and wanted to meet for coffee, so I'll be meeting with him. So I'll be meeting with him at 1:30 on the 13th. I will be meeting with Chief Dickinson from Calco on the 14th at 9:00 a.m. at Common Grounds. And then I have a COG executive management meeting on the 15th at 9:00 a.m. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Stoppard?
I had my first Mother Lode job training meeting and introduction with the other supervisors from the other counties, Mariposa, Amnor, Tuolumne, that are all on it. I had a meeting with Joshua Pack. Unfortunately, our times could not coincide with Gary's times, so we were able to go over everything in District Five that's on my radar, and a few other things that he was able to bring up and bring to our attention. I've just met with Rich Dickinson last week and discussed things with Calco and, you know. And I've met with a multitude of other department heads throughout the county over the last few weeks, and I'll leave it at that.
Supervisor Mills?
Thank you. You mentioned a couple of things, Gary, so we'll go over those again. There's going to be a ribbon cutting for the Upper States Coast Bridge on the 21st at 2:30 at the site in Diamond 20. That bridge and the Harbor Bridge are the first two bridges that have been delivered in Calaveras County in the last 10 years. So it's a big deal. I've been working on an issue on Camp Nine Road. Everybody's familiar with the old cement facility out there, and the amount of shooting that's been going on, and junk cars, and junk appliances, and you name it. So we've been contacting the private property owners. Be aware that the facility Lehigh has for the cement plant is still an active mine site, which means you cannot be shooting on that property. And they have gone so far as to post 10 signs out there right now. They will be monitoring it on a random basis, and just everybody be aware. There's a heightened security system going on. I've asked BLM to remove the two cars that have been tossed over the bank at the overlook, as well as there's going to be somebody removing the travel trailer that burned last summer out there. And if anybody wants a boat, there's a boat out there. But we're working with the private property owners. It's an entirely private road, and getting that area resolved, including some volunteers that want to clean it up. Parrot's Ferry Road, everybody's familiar with natural bridges. I just want you to be aware that the Bureau of Reclamation has said that two years ago, their visitor use days was 54,000, and last year it was over 75,000. I just want to remind you, there's one bathroom. Also, the parking problem is out there, as well as there's no facilities once you get to the bottom, which is nearly a mile walk down. So we'll be meeting with Murphy's Fire and other agencies to try to get this resolved. I'll be in Sacramento with Folsom with the Bureau this Friday, and to see if we can get some resolution to this rather quickly, because it is a health and safety issue. If you are going down there, I might remind you that it is known to be a tick area, and ticks in that area have been proven to carry Lyme disease. So please check yourself, mention it to your friends. Additionally, Calaveras and Tuolumne have been going through at least two meetings on developing a JPA on Lake Tullock. And Tuolumne County has expressed an interest to do that. TRIDAM has expressed an interest to do that, and so that we can start thinking of this jointly in terms of how do we fund marine safety down there. The Sheriff's Department's been involved in it from both counties. Marine Safety's been involved in it from both counties. And it keeps coming back up to the Bass Lake Plan, where they would be buying stickers to put on their boats, in an essence, trying to find a way to limit the amount of activity on the lake. It is a lake that currently is designed for only about 116 boats, but we have seen maxes as high as 180, and there have been deaths out there as a result of boating accidents. So I would ask this board, maybe in a poll possibly, Chair, to have staff continue to work with Tuolumne County. Bring forward something as an agenda item that we can look at as a potential JPA, and we can start developing a funding mechanism so that we're not taking it out of our general fund consistently to fund marine safety out there, and also to develop some consistent policies between the counties. There was a recent attempt on the Greensprings Finger to, in Tuolumne County, to shut that off to boats. And that met with instant pushback, and I was in that meeting to say, no, you're not going to do that. And everybody is in agreement. So as long as there's a will and a desire for all of the agencies that are involved in Lake Tullock to want to have that discussion, I would like to see it come back as an agenda item, and staff to put together something that would be agreeable to both counties and TRIDAM that we can start, because they're asking to have better control on marine safety.
Discussion on there? Can't have a discussion. I mean, excuse me, discussion on there? Can't discuss it? Just a poll?
Right, no, I'm going to answer the poll.
Thank you.
I can support that.
Thank you. Supervisor Tovinelli?
I'm fine with it.
Supervisor Calaveras?
Fine with it as well, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Is it good, Dennis?
That's it, thank you.
Supervisor Calaveras?
I too was at the LAFCO meeting. I went to a fundraiser for Blue Mountain Radio.
Good people.
And I, so I donated to your, yeah. They have this awesome radio station in West Point.
They do?
Blue Mountain Radio. And so they, in fact, one of the people that headed it up used to cover the Board of Supervisors.
Always welcome to talk on the radio in West Point.
Yeah. I was elected Chair of Area 12 Agency on Aging. I have CSAC, California State Association of Counties, this week. This weekend, Calaveras Wine Grape Alliance is having President's Weekend. So rain or shine or snow, please come and enjoy President's Weekend and support the wine industry in Calaveras. Like then, I've been meeting with all the departments and agencies that service District Three, and getting lots of snow questions. I really want to thank the Road Department for what they're doing under very difficult circumstances.
Thank you.
Chair, I do have one more, and it just came to my attention. Remember, the Angels Murphy's Arnold Boosters is holding their crab feed at Frog Town this Saturday as well. So if you're interested in crab, I'll just offer that up.
Good stuff. Okay, I'll go. I think I explained to you guys that I have, I'm on the Executive Committee of RCRC, and I'm Chair in the Water and Resources Committee. It has been, as legis, and I mentioned that, I keep appraising legislation as they're coming forward. Lots of ideas are kicking around in the Senate Assembly that are going to impact us. People are coming up with all kinds of ideas on how to deal with communities like ours that are in a high fire hazard. Some of them are really bad, all stop. Some of them we could work with. We're taking an approach with RCRC that we, they're going to drop something on us, we're trying to help pick our poison. So that we, things that we could work with, rather than some of the draconian ideas that people are coming. I'll keep you aware, we have the legislation that is rumored surfaced yet, but we're keeping a very close eye on it, and I have a lot of faith in the staff at RCRC. It's a subcommittee put together with Tahama, Mono, Napa, and us. So we have weekly calls to monitor that legislation and prepare ourselves. We're not just being, they're not doing it to us, but we're trying to use a little judo and see if we can make the work better. Meetings with Umrah, of course, Lions Club, Inshallada Feed, West Point Crab Feed, first five meeting, Chamber event, Supervisor Stoppard, Supervisor Mills as well. Manuel and I had a very good meeting with the mayor and city manager of Angels Camp, which I guess is a really traditional thing to do. And it's always good to keep in touch with our neighbor municipalities. It's very pleasant, and the compatriot really puts on a nice image. So I have nothing else to announce. Manuel?
I have nothing.
County Council? Madam Clerk? Supervisor Tovinelli?
Yes. You know, I've been sitting here, and Will's still here, and his comment, when he came up, he had no idea what the Hardwood Advisory Committee does. And Maria can correct me if I'm wrong, because she was here, I believe, from 2007 they were created, and they were going to be an advisory to the Board of Supervisors in some element in the general plan, as far as protecting hardwoods here in Calaveras. And they came forward, and they did present the board with a document that they would like to have incorporated in the general plan, and they've met a few times since then. I don't think, they're currently meeting maybe once or twice a, yeah, once a year right now. I wasn't sure if it was once or twice a year. But they will be coming forward again when we start getting back into the general plan. So you might get with Diane, Will, and get the members on that, that are active in that right now, and the Chair, and get brought up to date with where they are, and maybe get that document so you can go through it and read it and be aware of what it says. But that was the whole reason for the Hardwood Advisory Committee, was to advise on the general plan, the board on the general plan, to preserve hardwoods here in Calaveras. Okay?
They've been meeting in November of each year, and Kevin White, the ag commissioner, is the staff contact.
And Will, I'm always happy to talk to you about the benefits of cattle on those. Acorns and grass. So on that, if there's no objection, we stand adjourned.